Okay, so we're calling the planning commission to order. And at eighteen oh four, six oh four. Announcements? So, the town has hired a sustainability coordinator. It's Stephen Dodson. He has lived in the area for a little bit, a couple of years. He's been doing a lot of work as a consultant and contractor with various organizations in town. He will be starting February third. Super excited. It was really, really strong field of over seventy-five really qualified applicants. So, yeah, there was a... There were a couple of steps in the process. On the hiring committee was the town manager, myself, Steve Barrett, who's director of Public Works, Liz McLaughlin, and David Scholes from the select board, Oscar Heller, who is chair of the energy committee, and Elizabeth Bridgewater from Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust. So, I feel really good about the decision and we're really excited for Stephen to start. He's got a broad range of skills and perspectives on sustainability. So, there's community building aspects, there's the energy, agriculture and transportation. So, we're really excited.
What was he working on just before this or presently, if anything?
He'd been... I'm not sure if I have it exactly right, but he'd been associate director at Richard Earth Institute. He's been consulting with Brattleboro Savings and Loan on their B Corp status, maintaining their B Corp status. He's worked at One Report, which they pulled together, I think, a bunch of sustainability metrics for businesses to help them. He's volunteered, he's a Wyndham Regional Commissioner. He's been working on a sibling project where, like this area would partner up with a community in Sweden, exchange ideas.
Ideas we could have.
Yeah.
Not sure how many we could...
How many we can...
A little over there.
I maybe have an announcement. This is a while ago that we got a follow-up. Some of us got a follow-up letter from the... Specifically, James Levinson from the signpost idea. That was one of the applicants. And I guess he was just writing to try to see if there's anything else we could do. I wrote an email back saying I'd bring it up at the next meeting, but the Better Block Challenge is over and sorry, didn't work out for them. And that, you know, we'll be reminded of you and maybe something will come again in the future.
One of the things that recently has come up that I think maybe we should send their way is the Town Arts Fund.
Oh.
That might be a source of funding that they could look for. Those applications, I think, are due January tenth, so...
Town Arts Fund.
That might be good.
I'll send that email, I guess, too.
Okay. You can look it up and you'll find a link to the application. Not sure who would be designing their son, but if they could incorporate artists into that. I think those are for grants up to five thousand.
Okay. Could be a billboard. Oh, it's not allowed in Vermont. Put it right over here, Sam.
Other announcements? Public comments?
I am the public.
You are the public. Do you like to comment?
Hello.
Okay. Approval of the minutes? Did everybody get a chance to read the minutes? Any questions? Comments? I guess, do I need to make a motion to approve them before we can have comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, is there a second? So, comments, additions, corrections, changes. You have to insert the date or a time. Insert time here, it says.
I will.
Okay, all those in favor?
I am.
The minutes are approved. All right, we are... There's a shift in our agenda. We're going to do the neighborhood development area designation in advance of the downtown designation.
All right. Yeah, so thanks for being flexible. I have to fill in for Brian for development review for tonight, which is at seven. You don't mind if I...
Maybe you want me to say?
Yeah. Thank you. All right, so, I guess before I came in to the town, Sue and Brian, I guess, it was just Sue. You and Brian at the time were thinking about getting something called Neighborhood Development Area Designation, which is another state kind of designation program, kind of like how we have our downtown that's designated and also West Brattleboro Village. This is another kind of designation. So, kind of a background, there's one hundred fifty-nine state designations throughout the state of Vermont, ranging from village centers to growth centers. There's kind of the core designations, which is build center, downtown, or new town center. And then the neighborhood development area is an add-on to that. So, kind of a quick overview, basically similar to downtown in terms of the benefits you get. Kind of really reduces the time and cost of state permitting in those areas that are within an easy walking distance of another state designation like our designated downtown. And then areas also that are compact enough services. Municipalities or developers, so private or public entities, may use the designation to encourage the creation of new homes in development-ready locations. And then, basically, designation has to go to existing municipalities that have existing designations like us. So, this is kind of like the meat of why we want to get an NDA is the benefits that come with it. Starting with qualified mixed-income projects. So, mixed income means not just affordable, it's all sorts of income. Are exempt from Act 250 regulations, which is huge. That's a lot of money developments can save, I mean thousands, tens of thousands of dollars. Siggen?
I mean, you're probably going to answer this question.
All right. In our wastewater reviews, are capped at fifty dollars. That's another cost that's saved. Municipalities receive priority consideration for state grants, so other opportunities to really expand and create housing. And then for properties that do have an existing Act 250 permit, there's no permit or amendment that's required. And then for a mixed-income project, again, that meets underlying permit conditions to our regulations in place, there's exceptions from land gain tax. And then Act 250 projects not qualifying for exemption do receive a fifty percent discount. So, for example, Red Clover Commons Two, which will be going in a few years, they would receive... If they did not apply yet for Act 250, they would receive a fifty percent discount, which would save them, I think, like twelve thousand dollars or something. And then a local conditional use decision that a housing project meets the character of the area criteria, it cannot be appealed by, like, a neighbor, for example, if it met administrative review by Brian Drv. So, yeah, that's kind of the... So, very similar to downtown designation benefits. It really creates opportunities for new housing. I know we aren't growing right now, but if we have something like this in place, it really... We're being proactive. So, if growth does come eventually, we have the programs in place to address it.
Can you explain what land gains taxes?
I'll do my best job. I'm not sure, Sue, if you know. I... Can I get back to you?
She'll answer.
I mean, I'm just wondering.
Randy, do you know? Yeah, I figured you probably would know.
If you have a property transaction, and I think there may be a number of years that go along with it as well, and I don't know the deal with the number of years, and you sell... It's to stop people from turning properties over quickly. So, I think if you hold it less than a certain number of years and you make a profit when you resell, you have to pay taxes on the amount of your profit.
Like capital gains.
Yeah. It's like capital gains tax. But I can't tell you what the year numbers are that go along with it, but that's the idea.
Great, thank you.
Stop that horrible real estate investment in Vermont.
I'm curious how it can be exempt from Act 250.
Well, it's, again, it's for areas that, you know, are... That the state feels or that, you know, we also feel should have new housing development or should be, you know, developed in a more compact neighborhood development pattern, which...
Well, there is... I mean, we should be careful with that because there... You'll see, there is a criteria. It's supposed to be within a half a mile walking distance of the designated downtown. So, because it adds on to the downtown designation. It's not something that you can even do on the village.
No, you can't. Yeah, it's just a different buffer.
Different buffer?
Yeah.
Quarter mile.
Yeah, quarter mile.
All right. Well, we might need to revisit that.
Yes. So, it's really for areas that are, you know, within walking distance of the services. Again, so trying to create more walkability and, you know... Like, when I get to the application process, there's a complete streets framework that, you know, they want towns to follow.
And wastewater review is cap... Can you explain why that is a benefit?
It's another fee that, like, you know, developers, you know, soft costs and far costs. It's a soft cost. And it's just another, you know, obviously, you know, they go through us and then they, you know, they have 250, and then they have to go through A and R for wastewater, which is just all developments have to do it, and that can also add up. So, it's just, you know, fifty dollars is pretty cheap.
Yeah. It's pretty cheap, but that doesn't mean they're cutting corners in terms of their reviews or dealing with their wastewater.
No, it's actually getting rid of duplicative review.
Oh, it is. Oh, well, that's good. Okay.
Or the review happens, but you only have to pay fifty instead of whatever the normal...
Yes, whatever the normal fee is.
Right, well, the review happens, but it's, yeah, capping the fee at fifty instead of hundreds or something.
So, I mean, for many people, when they see, like, you know, don't pay for Act 250, that's a pretty good thing. I mean, not saying it's bad. I mean, Act 250 does have its benefits, but it can be expensive.
For example, just to give you an idea of Act 250 fees, when Red Clover Common One was built, that was about twenty-two thousand dollars in Act 250 fees. Yes, to get their state land use permit.
And that's an add-on.
To be able to do anything after that.
And that's an add-on.
As a percent of the value of the development or something, mostly?
I don't recall how they calculate that. Do you know how Act 250 fees?
I think it actually might be...
I think it is.
I think it is, yeah. So, you know, you have... So, they go through us, they pay our fees, and we also, you know, it could be up to ten thousand or more sometimes, and then they go to Act 250 and then... So, yeah. And...
Do you want us... Are you expecting action or are you just informing? So, we want to approve... We want to apply for this designation and submit in February because we see it as a kind of a no-brainer. We think our land use regulations are where they need to be and we can meet all the requirements. We are asking for an extension of the half-mile radius around the designated downtown. And we'll show you on the map, and we can justify why. So, we just think that it's a pretty... It's kind of a no-brainer if it can give anybody who might want to develop in this area, you know, some relief from Act 250 or just other state permitting fees, then it didn't seem like... It just seemed like a low cost. Because there's kind of no cost for us to do this.
Yeah. And it encourages housing, too. And so, going to the map, this is our proposed NDA. And as you can see, that's the half-mile buffer. And that's some reasons why we're extending to kind of the canal, north of Canal Street, or just before Exit One, is because, as you can see, almost half of the buffer is in New Hampshire. And there's the Connecticut River. And then we also have a lot of natural constraints, like steep slopes, especially in this area right here. And we already have a lot of existing, really developed neighborhoods. So, most of it, obviously, is in the half-mile buffer, but then we're looking at, like, you know, Josh, where you lived, John generous street, and then there's spare grounds, and then where a lot of the services are existing, and then obviously, there's the hospital as well. It's right there. And it's, I think, I have... Yeah.
So, you can see, I mean, it's really built for maybe redevelopment of these areas or infill, particularly, you know, in the price market thirty-two area or, you know, who knows? Outlet center, I mean, who... We don't really know. It's not like there's a lot of large vacant parcels to be developed there. But it's really just preparing in case there was...
No, they wanted, let's just say that, you know, the plaza with the price sucker was transformed into, like, a mixed-use development in years to come or something. You know, the area, you know... And, you know, another thing is, too, that this area is also serviced by water, which is important. And I have some additional maps I'll show you that show the facilities that are located. Any questions regarding the proposed NDA? Changes or...
Do they do extensions, like a physical mileage extensions or whatever? Are we trying to do like a half-mile radius or bring it up to three-quarter mile at this?
No, there isn't really any specifics. It just, you know, there...
These criteria we need to address.
Basically, the area that we're going to extend should be consistent with the statewide planning goals.
But I mean, you're allowed to just, like, extend it?
If we can... If certain conditions are met.
Gotcha.
Yeah. You know, does the extension represent a logical extension of existing development, for example? So, yes, we can.
Is there a consideration for the Village of West Brattleboro? There has not been, and I think we definitely do want to consider that. I'm going to confess that that was off the radar, that you could extend it on a village center. Because when we met with the state, that was not the discussion that we had. So, that's my fault. The one thing that you should know is you cannot... The floodplain cannot be included in it. So, it doesn't necessarily help out Millrose Terrace right now, but it could help out... It could help out Delm Shalay, for sure.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good. And eventually, it could help out the Millrose Terrace properties when it's... When the map has been...
And is this not... Is it connected in any way to village center designation?
It does, in that the area has to be contiguous to a state designation, so village center or downtown. So, we could not go and put this up on Putney Road with a...
With a village center designation or a downtown designation that attaches to.
Yeah.
So, essentially, the benefit is a tax breaks, permit breaks?
Permit breaks. A little bit of the...
Yeah.
A little bit of the tax.
And then more consideration, more priorities for grant opportunities as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It does not extend, like, the historic tax credits or any of those at this time?
So, it would make sense in terms of West Brattleboro to first, if possible, we were talking about broadening the village center designation first and then doing this.
We were talking about extending the village zoning district, not the village center designation.
We were talking about both originally, as I remember it.
The village center designation, that's a different process?
Because of tax credits. Right, which is a different process.
A different process.
Right, but that would be then, after the zoning change, which it hasn't changed yet.
Not yet.
So, once the zoning changed and then talked about...
That is an option. We could...
Okay, great.
We could look for an extension of the...
And then we've done this, like, the order.
What are the potential negatives?
I don't see any.
I mean, I don't see any myself right now. I mean, there's only a few... There's only, like, a couple of towns, mostly in Chitting County, that have done it. I mean, we really would be the first in southern Vermont to do this. But obviously, we see more of these kind of designations in those areas because they are seeing some growth.
Is there... Can you give us an example of one that's gotten it and then done the development so we can actually see how it works?
Well, I know Winuski has a designation in terms... Oh, you mean developments that have happened after?
Yeah.
Not exactly, but I can look into it.
Yeah, I don't...
Now, since I've made some connections in that area, so I can contact some people and see what I can get.
I mean, it would be cool to see.
Yeah, no, of course.
If somebody had done something really interesting in Vermont.
The only other thing I would say... So, one example would be Putney. So, we're going for this neighborhood development area boundary, where we're going for a whole area. You can do a site-specific designation. And so, Putney Landing, which is the affordable housing complex off of Exit Four that Wyndham Windsor Housing Trusted, they went and did a site-specific there, I think, for the reduction of fees at 250 and the wastewater. So, that's an example. I mean, it's not necessarily going to... You know, it didn't spur that development, but it helped make that project more financially feasible by knocking down those fees. So, that was the one example that they gave us, I think. And I'm thinking, you know, as we talk, like, if there was to be a development sooner rather than later out in West Brattleboro attached to the village center, that's... We could go for a site-specific designation. And then I think it's kind of a temporary thing. I didn't get the impression that it... Well, maybe it stays with it, but you can, if you know you've got a housing project going, you could seek that site specific.
I do know that Champlain Housing Trust uses it a lot in Chitting County.
Yeah.
So, there's a bunch of...
I think it is the housing trusts that are primarily...
That are primarily using it.
Because of the fees.
Yeah. And so, they're doing it for individual sites when they do a project.
Gotcha.
Isn't... Aren't a lot of things in a town like Brattleboro exempt from Act 250 already because our planning...
It depends. Well, we do have zoning and subdivision regulations, but when you're talking about a project that, like, the Housing Trust or the Brattleboro Housing Partnerships are going to do, they're creating a certain number of units which does trigger Act 250. So, Red Clover Commons had more than the number of units that are required, so they didn't need Act 250.
It's not... Acreage is not the only...
It's, yeah, it's not the only.
So, then, would we want to do something or would anyone want to do something like this on a smaller scale within Brattleboro? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, because in effect, if this, long-term, and if more places in the state do this, all the areas outside of the zones are... Will have their fees increased to kind of subsidize the areas within. And that's all right if we value, you know, smart growth and dense growth. And if we were to do something like this, but since those other areas are like the rest of the state, it's like kind of all just a benefit for us as an individual town without much drawback. But if we were to do something like this within our town...
Are you talking about with our own, a town policy?
Yeah, then the rural people would be like, oh, our fees are going up to subsidize the reduced fees in the town, but that's not what we're doing. I'm just saying that. It makes me think...
Is that... Would that happen? I mean, is the state saying, oh, well, we're taking so much of a loss on these neighborhood designation projects that now we're going to charge more in our fees for...
Well, I don't know that they view it that way. I mean, I think they're trying to spur development. And so, I think they view if they can, you know...
Yeah, I also...
Increase the housing. I, you know, I mean, we'd have to ask them in that manner, but I didn't get the impression that they're looking to raise fees somewhere else to help subsidize development that might be happening in these areas. I think they're trying to spur development.
Yeah, and I also...
But it's really actually a question worth asking because if the unintended consequences that rural development becomes more expensive.
Well, I also think they're just... They're trying to put the housing where it should be, you know, in more of the urban areas. I don't think they're trying to, you know, in any way, the program isn't intended to raise prices for rural areas, at least from what I've read, but we can look into that further. I mean, I think it is a valid question.
I mean, I guess it would... It depends on if the state budget says we're going to get so much money out of Act 250, and if they come in shy, then they raise their fees.
I don't know that that's ever been done before. Do you know?
I would say that they have a long ways to go before this becomes a problem. I mean, you have that problem with current use because it's that popular of a statewide program, but these neighborhood development areas have not taken off. And then actually, in most areas, there's just... There are good reasons why they're not going to, and so, because they don't have the infrastructure, they don't have a lottery. So, I don't think they're going to burn through their coffers very quickly.
So, the point is to induce development in developed areas?
Yes, the development, yeah. It's really meant for the areas that are ready for it or have, like, the infrastructure.
So, then, do we... You need us to approve you doing this?
Well, yeah, so, I guess, to give you a little timeline, so this is kind of a task list of what I've been doing for the application. Making great progress. I mean, if you want to aim for February, I mean, I should really be done with this by the end of the month. We basically, we've met with them already. We got a confirmed letter from Wyndham Regional. All these are just the different components. I... I'm going to show you some of the maps I've been working on. But, yeah, we're moving along pretty smoothly.
We don't need a formal vote. I mean, it could be nice to have a vote. We were going to take this to the select board just to kind of keep them apprised as to what we're doing, but it's not like a requirement of the application or anything like that. It's more of, this is a planning tool, so we thought we'd bring it before the planning commission and also look at the select board, know what's going on. But if you wanted to take a vote in support, that is nice, too.
So, yeah, so there's some mapping requirements just for the application, and these are in progress. Some, one of them is to map some of the, you know, natural resources, so endangered rare species. I still got to figure out what species exactly are in this area, wetlands, and then, of course, the flood zones. And there's some still in the area. I mean, as you can see, Brattleboro has a lot of natural constraints, so no matter what, we're going to hit something. But, and then these are the slopes that are greater than twenty-five percent. Yeah. So, a lot of this area, I mean, even though it's kind of in that designation, is, you know, part of, you know, the retreat and the retreat trails, so we wouldn't really be developing there anywhere. It's just within that boundary. And then this is the facilities map. So, we got sewer lines. It's hard to see, I'm sorry. There's sewer infrastructure, transit lines, public facilities, like, you know, the hospital, school, trails. And then I'm working on a map with someone from Public Works with planned facilities because that is also another map. And then, the next one, areas that are appropriate for residential development, which is basically just... I just showed the zone, the residential zones that are in that area, like residential neighborhood, neighborhood center, and then the mixed-use center, and then the density that's allowed in those zones. Because that's another component of the application, is that we have to meet a certain density that's already in our regulations, and we surpass it, so we're good there. We do have an historic district that's in, that would be within the NDA, which is, like, Clark Street and then...
And Portland.
Yep. And then the proximity, obviously, to our downtown designation. Still working on these. Other than that, any other questions?
Can you go back?
Sure.
What's this? Where is that out?
Oh, because this is the designation, the downtown.
Oh, 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 oh.
It's actually not part of the NDA. Yep.
Can you go back one more map?
You got it.
The brown, what is that? Endangered species?
So, endangered slash rare species live or been found in this area. I'm not sure exactly what it is. I got to get in touch with, I think, fishing wildlife or...
It's in your backyard?
Yeah, me, too.
It could be birds or insects.
No, it could be... It could be vertebrates. It could be rare flowers or plants.
Yeah, floral flora.
Well, I just learned about the kettle pond.
Yes.
The kettle pond is probably... Right there in the middle. Yeah, that's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
The kettle pond.
It's near Willser's Woods.
Is that from a glacier? A glacier's pressure or something?
What, how do you define a kettle pond?
We talked about this in our conservation, the conservation commission now.
But apparently, all... There's all sorts of runoff from...
It's going to be all day. It's all just in Canal Street.
Yeah, it's going to a meeting where they're trying to bring it back.
High priority area for remediation, stormwater.
So, you're right there.
Yeah.
You know where it is.
Yeah, I had a duck that flew in there one time. I'm going to get her out of there. That's how I discovered it.
Did you feel salty afterwards? I guess it's pretty...
I can get it and it cooks your back.
Yeah, so that's it. That's what we've been working on and, yeah. We see it as a positive for the town, but obviously, we really appreciate your feedback.
I see it as a positive.
Yeah, you know, like, obviously, I always worry about, like, the fallout or the aftermath, you know, like, the negatives that we didn't foresee, you know, like, five years down the road, like, ooh. Like, is it something we can reconsider in the future if there is...
Well, I'll tell you this, you do have to go for every five to eight years, it has to be renewed.
Okay.
So, I guess during that time, we could reconsider.
It does have to be renewed?
Yep, just like any other designation does. Yep.
Yeah, it looks just like benefits to me.
Yeah.
And when and if development pressure comes, we'll be more attractive for it.
Well, and isn't... Well, and isn't, I mean, we do, we do, we would like more housing.
Yeah, I mean, we still have a housing problem in town, so-
Yeah, this seems like part of that.
Cause it, it is an emphasis on housing.
Yep, and it, and it's an emphasis not just on like affordable, but all.
All kinds of-
All kinds of housing.
Cool. Great.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy, okay, next.
Do you have your report, Randy?
Hmm?
Do you have your report?
Um, I have my, I have my business, what, what's we got?
I have an H D M I.
There's one in each hallway.
Your water. Oh, do you need water?
Am I taking your seat?
We have a water thing in there, but there's a water pump around.
There's cups, there are cups right here. Um, I'll get it.
Doesn't look that scary.
So you all got the email with the results?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, you gotta be looking at it for us.
Yeah, really interesting, so interesting. Are they, are they, are they gonna be available online?
What?
These?
Survey results? Um, yeah, and actually, they're getting integrated into the story map as well.
I was just thinking, for the, if anybody ever watches these television shows, that they might actually-
I can put this document up. Let me get up tomorrow.
Trying to think, I, I don't know that I did put this on the project website, I've still got the videos to put links up to and this, so.
Yeah, so we can-
Oh, I can get it on ours this weekend.
Okay. So, tonight's agenda is to look at the survey results and then look at the structure of the product that I've been working on, the story map, give you a sense of what I'm envisioning, and an opportunity to provide some feedback while it's still in sort of the progress of being developed. And I have a few specific things that I want you guys to give me some feedback on as well in terms of what some of the priorities and focus, things we should put more time into versus less time, so we can talk about that. But, so the survey ended up getting a really good amount of response, so you ended up with five hundred and sixty-four responses to the public space survey. And gave you some bit of a demographic big breakdown. The one odd thing, and I, I think it's relevant to looking at the rest of the survey results, and this has actually never happened to me before with a survey. The respondents to the survey were predominantly female, so the ratio is not anywhere near fifty-fifty of respondents. So, that's where we are. You can see the breakdown, so.
There you are, yeah.
Yeah.
So the no response, so twenty percent we don't know?
Twenty percent we don't know. I mean, if you assume that even, if you assume that that's all male, it still isn't a fifty-fifty sort of breakdown.
Right, right.
And it's, assuming no response is not entirely one hundred percent, so I, I don't know what this, what more to draw from this, but it's the first time this has ever occurred in my surveying career here, so there we are.
I thought it was a high number of respondents from Brattleboro as well, at sixty-nine percent? It's good to see that.
Yep.
Just not like it was primarily people from out of town.
No, I mean, we did hear from some, some folks, and obviously, a couple of the, when we were distributing the survey during some of the events and stuff, I think we were getting a little more traffic from people who were out and about, but yeah, primarily from, from people in Brattleboro and then, you know, nearby. So, one of the questions was to ask, ask people for three words to describe downtown Brattleboro. This ends up reflecting the range of what I heard. I did do some combining of very similar terms to try to give a sense of the weight of the concept, basically, the basically same ideas, so they might have been both, you know, beautiful and pretty, and I, there were more beautifuls and there were a few pretties, I included the pretties with beautiful, that type of thing. So you can get some sense, the larger, the typeface, the more people use that term. So, you know, you're seeing a mix here of, of positive and, and negative perceptions. I don't think it's, it's that surprising, what people are concerned about downtown, so.
Creativeness, that's interesting.
What's that?
The word creative is small.
Yeah, yeah, there was not a lot of, I think, artsy, I think I combined, there was a few people who used the word creative, and I think I ultimately combined that one into the artsy grouping, because it was just two or three, and there was a lot more people who used it.
Word artsy.
Yeah, word artsy.
Interesting.
Yeah. So, so yeah.
So the big ones are lively, friendly, unsafe and beautiful?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So the specific question was what words describe downtown?
Yeah, I asked, yes, yeah, list three words that you would use to describe downtown Brattleboro. And we do know that some youth took the survey because they said it was boring. Documentation, I don't know, I didn't go back and fact check that, I just made that up, but it'd get boring, you know? Equal to fun, though, so.
Did, did any of, was there a follow-up that would help people or help us to understand, like inaccessible? What, what was-
We, we, we do have the open-ended questions that follow, and one of the things you definitely see in the open-ended questions is accessibility coming up, that people have difficulty getting around Brattleboro, either because of mobility issues, or because they have small children, and they feel it is challenging, given the parking situation and the traffic situation, to get them safely from one point A to point B. So those, those types of accessibility things is what I think people are using. So then we got into the series of questions about how frequently people come downtown, and why they come downtown. So, that was, was definitely, we heard from people who are here quite a bit, so daily or weekly in downtown, those are primarily the folks who responded, and did give that a bit of a breakdown on age and gender categories as well. And then why are people coming downtown? This lines up pretty well with what you got from the parking survey, which asked sort of a similar question. Coming downtown for food, to go out, for shopping, for events. And we did not hear from many people who are living downtown, I think we tried hard to reach them, and I, I don't know that we actually managed to hear from a lot of people who are living downtown. And not for a lot, and people are not coming downtown for sort of recreational reasons, you know, to go, you know, going for a walk, going to a park, that type of thing, those are down at the bottom as well.
I can give you the printed copy, it's not a physical thing.
Um, so asking people, we, we have the list of the, of these seven spaces, so the Wells Fountain Courthouse space, the Municipal Library space, Pliny, the Church Street Park, the Wetstone Pathway, Plaza Park, and then on Depot Street. And ask people, you know, which of these places offer these elements? So places to sit and rest, places to meet and talk, things to see, activity, places to, for activity and play. You know, those are some of the list, the items of what makes a, for good public space. So we ask, we're basically asking, do you think that these have those components of good public space? And, you know, they're not particularly high here on these percentages. Pliny Park probably does the best out of this grouping in terms of, of offering some of those, those elements. But, and as we go along and look at the follow-up slides, and we start asking, you know, when people, more, more about each place, each park specifically, there's a lot of people that just even aren't familiar with them. They don't go to them at all, or don't know of them, or, you know, have reasons why they don't go to them. So, I think that's, that's interesting as well. And then, so that question around the what do public spaces offer you was followed up by an open-ended question that said, is there anything else these spaces offer you? And people could just write in a response. I did tag all those responses based on the themes that were in them. So you can see, these were some of the most common. I put the positive ones up here at the top, around green space, that was really high. People really wanna see green spaces downtown, and, and preferred those. That came out in the visual, the photo preference survey as well. People, the, the flowers downtown got mentioned, you know, events and activities, that kind of thing. But vast, you know, a much larger percentage of the comments focused on the problems in these spaces right now. And, I mean, you can see that, the, the first one there, drug-drinking addiction sort of grouping of comments, more people, that was the comment, that's the category that got the most comments. And is obviously a large concern, and many people, you know, said that they were concerned about this as a problem, and that said that there were also positive things, you know, so it's not like it's, it was, people were entirely negative, but there was a fairly substantial level of concern with the, these, these issues and problems in the public spaces.
What was the date of this survey?
We, we opened the survey up in September, and it ran through the end of October-ish. So it was, it was a good, it was open and available for seven weeks or so, I think.
What stood out to you on this the most in the, the negative comments?
I think the, the breadth of that being the top concern that people have, and it, it comes up even more in the sort of general comment question that comes in at the very end.
Yeah, I saw that.
You know, I think even the people who, who see a lot of positive in downtown, they were still expressing concerns as well, so I think the kind of ubiquity of that starting to come up in the comments is, is something. So, and I tried to, here and in the other sections, tried to pull some of the, the comments and include them directly, so you can get a chance to read them, I know you can't read them on the screen here, but, and I tried to give you a sense of the range of the types of comments that were, were there, so you can get a sense of what was heard. At some point, I'm gonna export out all the comments in their entirety, make them over to Zoom. If you want to read, read the whole tome, you can. So then we started running through the individual public spaces, those seven spaces, and asking about them. And I've got these in order based on the, how many people are actually going to these places. So the Wetstone Pathway ends up being the one that people frequent the most, obviously being a thoroughfare that people are moving through. And the table at the top shows, you know, how frequently people are in the, or on the Wetstone Pathway. So, you know, at least once a week, twenty-one percent, once a month, nineteen percent. So even this, which is the busiest and most popular one from the bunch, is not still in the survey. Some, a place, there's, you know, a third of people don't go there at all, who responded to the survey. And, you know, remember that these are, you know, vast majority Brattleboro residents, so they're here in downtown quite frequently. So then, after asking that question, we asked about, and it was an open-ended question, about what people would like to see done to improve that space. And in this instance, on the Wetstone Pathway, the concerns around homelessness, loitering, and the drinking, drugs, addiction type of concerns, hand handling, those were clearly very high, and were- So, the one thing I think is interesting, if you run through that whole list at the top, so feeling unsafe or uncomfortable, and comments around policing as well, that was mentioned in at least sixty percent of the written comments to this question, so. So once again, people may have mentioned some positive things and mentioned one of these issues as well.
So, the question is, what should be done to improve the Wetstone Pathway, and the answer is homelessness, I don't get that.
Well, the, the response was talked about homelessness as an issue, so they wanted to see something done to address the homelessness issue that they see on the Wetstone Pathway. Or, we feel-
So do something, do something about the homeless people on the Wetstone Pathways, the way we're supposed to read this, twenty-three percent.
Twenty-three percent of the people who answered said something about homelessness.
Addressing it.
They did, some of them, most of them said, we, we don't want to see evidence of homelessness on the Wetstone Pathway, but, but not everyone. Some people made comments around wanting to provide more services to the homeless people who are on the Wetstone Pathway.
Okay, okay, so it's more nuanced than-
It is, it's more nuanced, it's, you know, when you have five hundred, we have two hundred and thirty actual written comments on this, so I am trying to give you some sense of what topics were mentioned, and I will say that, like, in the, in the category around, say, homelessness, and also the one around policing, I would say too, there is comments sort of on both sides of the issue, so that, you know, like I said, some people-
One said more police, one said fewer.
Yes.
Or, police are doing a nice job being respectful of-
Of, of people, or, you know, we need more policing, or, you know, we don't want people, we don't want people to be arrested for, you know, being in public spaces, that kind of thing. So you do see both sides of that on the policing. I would say both with the homelessness and the policing, more of the comments were of the variety of, we want more policing, or we want, you know, not to see homeless people in our public space, than they were on the other side of, you know, we wanna see less police activity, or we want, you know, more done for the homeless who are in our public spaces. But there was representation on, from both of those points of view. And then in terms of what sort of actual specific things you really could do to make an improvement, you know, cleaning up, trash removal, that type of thing was, was the top item here, and then programming. So more events and activities and music happening. And many people did tie that idea of programming and activities with the, the comments around there being people loitering or, or inhabiting the space. That, you know, they wanted to see more activity so that there would be less of a predominance of people, the homeless, and camping type of use, which is basically how many people saw the Wetstone Pathway this month. So, the second most frequented location was Pliny Park. And I think, you know, you can see the numbers fall off quite a bit here, actually, already, that an even smaller percentage of survey takers actually ever spend any time at Pliny- that an even smaller percentage of survey takers actually ever spend any time at Plenty Park. We're basically down under a third, being there, I'd say on any sort of regular basis. The issue here that got the most traction in the comments was having more programming. So that was either music, people wanna see events and activities, that type of thing happening. They're paying people to perform. And you can see the, you know, the same negative issues that came up in relation to the Whetstone appear here, but the numbers are, are not as, as high for that. As we get over to the municipal center area.
Yikes. Wow.
A lot of people, I think they- Yeah, I mean, there's not, there's a hill, there's, you know, there are some, there was some attempt at putting out some picnic table or two, but, uh,
There are, I mean, there is some stuff at the top, but it's, you know-
And there is the little garden by the library, but no one can figure out how to get into it and whether it's even pop, whether you're allowed to. So actually, there was some interesting comments around, we didn't think that that was a place where you were allowed to be, essentially. So-
Yeah, I would have assumed that they don't want anyone hanging out there.
Sometimes you do see seeds, people, but-
I wanna see people hanging out there, but I would assume it's not like a place to hang out.
It's actually a large amount of land, which is kind of interesting to think about in terms of, and it's, it's green and shaded, but it is obviously quite sloped. It's a really serious slope. But yes, people definitely would like to see there be more, more seating. And that was the, the big promotion there. And then just a more, um, more landscaped sort of appearance, aesthetically enhancing sort of that entrance into the town. Same thing with the Depot Riverfront Park area. Again, a lot of people not even realizing that that's a public space that you can be in at all. So, and then accessibility and getting to this location, access came up in the comments here. And that was around the difficulty as a pedestrian of actually getting there. The need to cross through the intersection, to be on the other side of the road, to cross over, to, you know, deal with the railroad tracks, um, to get down there, so.
What is it? Are you addressing the third one, access to the river?
Access to the river.
I think that means for recreational, canoeing or by any-
No, yeah, that means recreational. Access is the last one, down at the bottom six, yeah. The access to the river, people would like to be able to get to the river. And that's something we're going to have to address in the, in the story map. Some of the environmental concerns there because-
Well, apparently BMAC might be doing it with their new development.
To different locations, there's some contamination issues here.
Yeah. So when people say they want access to the river, they actually would like to be able to get into the water to put a, you know, a kayak in or a small boat, or, you know, be out. And that's a bit of a challenge in this location. And I think that's something that hasn't, there isn't any sort of, those people who do know that it's a town piece of property can't figure out why that isn't already been done.
And the reason is, is that, that it's, there's pollution there?
Yeah.
There was coal tar found in the river back in the eighties and that doesn't, they don't want it disturbed. And so it's a steep slope, so you would have to put some sort of pier into it and, so.
And that would disturb it?
So that would disturb the coal tar on the riverbank or something.
Yes, that would be a major-
I'd have to, like, pull the records and stuff, but there is, plus it's the state of the answer.
Yeah, there's that problem too. As soon as you get into the, over the, into the water, you're, you're in the habit to it, so.
The high watermark.
So Plaza Park, once again, very hard to get to. And not, you know, a place that, that people are frequenting at all. And again, this is an area that people are concerned about how it is being used. Loitering issue, homeless issues came up, and drug issues there as well. And I didn't put up the individual sheets for the other two, which are the Church Street and the Wells Fountain, because no one goes to those. And they had such low numbers that, you know, people, they're both very small little locations and, and people don't really think of them as being a park space.
Unless you're protesting, they're probably not there.
Right.
Although I have to say, the one here is for the next.
The Wells Fountain?
Yeah, Fountain, yeah. There's actually a fair amount of space back there behind that.
It is, and it's shaded, so like the trees are a little bit of a buffer to the street noise, it's actually-
It's true. I had never been there before until that walk-around that we did.
So we also asked if there were other places that people spend time in. The, a lot of people just talked about being on the sidewalks and their experience with that. In the parking lots as well, some people commented on the parking lots. The, the space behind River Garden. A lot of people couldn't figure out why it is we didn't include the commons. And I think one of the recommendations I've got for looking at the story map is that we actually do include that as sort of a northern tremendous, while it is outside here, designated in downtown and downtown zoning districts and stuff. It is sort of the logical endpoint to any kind of pathway system or something like that that would flow through downtown. Confused a lot of people by not including it in the survey. So, so those were some of the, the comments. And then the bottom one, twelve percent of people basically said they don't spend time in public spaces because they're, they're concerned about safety or feeling uncomfortable, you know.
The library's a lot. Yeah, that's what I was saying there. Yeah, I'm surprised the library only got, was it nine percent? Seems a very utilized space.
This was an open-ended question though, so it wasn't like it was prompted.
Oh, it wasn't prompted, I got you.
Yeah, and I think people were, I mean, people were probably got the idea that we were looking at outdoor type spaces to some extent as well. I mean, people did provide some, you know, some people referenced a specific business that they go to or, you know, like, these are the sort of the destination points. I think you might wanna think about those as, for people coming downtown for a specific reason. And then we ended with the broad, you know, question of anything else basically that people wanted to talk about. And so in terms of the, the commentary, this is the, this is the thing that I think that probably did surprise me the most in the survey was the level to which, I mean, twenty-seven percent of those respond, those three hundred and some responses in some ways indicated that person felt unsafe or uncomfortable downtown. And that's, that's a serious, you know, right, a serious issue. Whether there really is that level of public safety concern or not, it hardly matters that if there's that perception that that exists. And, and, you know, the comments are, are pretty rough about what it is that people are, you know, believe is happening and, um, think is, you know, likely, you know, they're likely to face if they are gonna go downtown. And, um, you know, people saying that they've changed their habits and don't, you know, go downtown to go to the movies, or don't bring their, you know, bring their children with them when they go downtown. Or, you know, that they only park in a few locations that they feel are okay and won't go into any of the other areas to park, you know. So it's clearly, you know, a major, um, it's really affecting people's behavior and, and, you know, activity downtown. Yeah, yeah, so I mean, other, other topics that came up, um, you know, parking, always still a popular downtown concern did, did come up as well. The concern about noise and trucks, um, downtown. Bike lanes, bike parking came up. A lot of the amenity stuff that we've, we're looking at, restrooms, food vendors. There's always a small percentage of people that think that a pedestrian mall would be the best thing ever. Church Street, uh, yes, we just need Church Street.
Midtown Mall just had their event on Saturday or something and, you know, it's a small space, but I think that'd be so, in this climate where there's, I don't know if I, if I wrote that. I may have, I may have been one of the contributors.
To the pedestrian mall?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the climate's kind of uncomfortable more of the year than, than not. And so a kind of quasi-outdoor indoor space, I feel it has potential.
Turning Harmony One into a park, I think that's nice.
That's, that's kind of what my takeaway from all this is, it's kind of sad. The response from people, but it's understandable. And my realization now, I didn't even realize this before, that how we have almost no public space, like, in reality, that's accessible, that you can actually get to safely. We've got nothing. You know, like pu- public space is hugely important to the vibrancy of a town, right? So what does it take, and you don't have to answer this, but what does it take to rip up Harmony Parking Lot and turn it into a park, the entire thing?
Well, we're gonna, the, this, we're gonna talk about that through the story map. The, I, the thing to think about, and we'll, we'll talk a bit about it when we-
We don't need to, I don't, I don't need an answer, 'cause I know what it's gonna take, it's basically impossible.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna look at the, we're gonna, that, that question is gonna come up and it's going to be addressed in the story map, and we'll, we'll talk about that. You, you could take one, you could do one of them. You could get rid of one of the parking lots and turn it into a park, I think.
The one on Flat Street is a little easier.
But you can't do it to more than one and have enough parking. So there's some choices to be made, so that's the thing that we need to talk about.
Growing up in Brattleboro, we used to hang out in Harmony Parking Lot. And it's like the most unfathomable amount of hours spent in Harmony Parking Lot, and I'm not proud of it. But something that bums me out more than anything is that people don't hang out there anymore. You know, and it's a beautiful spot. If we got rid of all the parking, you know, we offered like eatery areas to some of the businesses that are eateries. And then if there's all green area with a fountain and then like a stage for performance or for protests or whatever, you know, it would not be as sad and minimal as Plenty Park is, say. So it's like, Harmony is like such an awesome opportunity, especially when we can't realistically access the river. You know, what else can we do? So it's like, that's, to me, it seems easy, but-
So I would say that in response to your, your initial thing that there aren't any spaces, you actually do have spaces. There are access issues to the spaces and there's sort of configuration and, and use issue. But it's, the, the land, there is opportunity. You actually, as a municipality, have a lot of land downtown. It's, it's how it's used and what it's used for is the question really. So I would push back against it, you don't have public space. I think you do. It's just, whether it's usable or good public space, I think is the question.
Exactly. And when people are thinking about it, like, like what I take away from all this, the work that you put into this, like, one of my takeaways is like, a lot of people aren't even aware of like what the public spaces are. So like, that's an indicator that like, okay, uh, is there public space downtown? Like, the, the big thing that they talk about is sidewalks. You know, like, I hang out on the sidewalk, like, that's sad. You know, like, we need green space. And like, the amount of time that I've observed Brattleboro and been in Brattleboro, like, Harmony Parking Lot is a beautiful space for that. You know, and it's like, it only makes sense to me, so. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna push back a little bit, but I give you.
So, um-
You'll see some ideas.
So there are some, yes, there are going to be ideas. And then I did include a range again of the comments for you to get a sampling in the sense of, of what, you know, what you, you would see if you read the full, um, rundown of all of them. So, you know, and I think it is a range. There are, and I, I think that a lot of people have a very nuanced and maybe somewhat conflicted, conflicted opinions about, about downtown, about how things have changed. People brought up the, you know, good times in the eighties in Harmony Parking Lot in the survey.
I'm talking about the nineties.
You were telling it. People, uh, so at least, you know, at least apparently the times were occurring in the eighties too.
The seventies were in the seventies. You're filthy.
So, yeah, so that, that came up. And, and then, you know, in addition to, to the, the comments that were a really, you know, descriptive of fear. So it, it is, it is a mixed bag on the semi comments.
You know, even, it's funny, like Harmony Parking Lot and hanging out, or, you know, being a young person. Older people would say, I don't wanna get down there because, you know, there's so many teenagers hanging out, I feel uncomfortable. So it's just, you know, there's always two sides to the coin. I never felt that way.
Exactly.
But, but nevertheless-
Yeah. The biggest indicator to a healthy community is young people hanging out. Especially like children, being outside and playing in the street, like riding bicycles and throwing balls and stuff, or teenagers standing in circles kicking hacky sacks. That's like what shows a healthy vibrant community.
Vibrancy, yeah.
And where's that happening? You know, like, does that, I don't see that anymore. And it's like, that, that's a bummer, you know, like, we should do something. We should offer a space to people where they can go to do those things.
But, you know, also, there's, there's been such a change with stranger danger and parents unwilling to give their children freedom to be with peers and so on. And, you know, which is a big reason that teenagers, I just learned this recently, a big reason teenagers are on their devices so much is their parents aren't, you know, aren't comfortable or as a society, we're not comfortable with enough face-to-face for, for teens, which is so important, you know.
But if we offer it to them, you know, if we give them a place that's safe, you know, then-
It's still parents in a lot of-
Right, parents would still have to be convinced that-
As a planning commission though, like, what is realistic? You know, I feel like a park in Harmony, like, so it's, it's, it's funny 'cause it says Harmony Parking Lot. It'd be such a simple thing to say, just Harmony Park, you know, get rid of the lot, that's the law.
Okay, so I think that brings us to the end of the survey results. There's also the photo preference survey, um, and we had that up. And you'll see those in the story map and all of those. So we showed, we, I continued that on after the charrette, so we had that up at the charrette. I didn't include the results from the charrette in the ones that are in the ser- this, this story map because they were highly influenced by one eight-year-old girl who went around and put sticky dots on a lot of things. In a rather uncontrolled manner. But, um, in any event, we've continued it on to the online survey using a set, a, a good portion of the same images that we used during the, that we had up during the charrette. And so we were able to get some feedback as to what people's preferences might be in bike and pedestrian and these and art and things like that downtown. Actually, I guess I, I don't think I did the lighting one online. The lighting pictures were really hard to deal with, 'cause, you know, in order to show lighting, it has to be dark. And this actually doesn't photograph very well, so that was a bit of a challenge, but. So let's move into the story, um, map here. I'm ready to get this up and get this online. So this is what the story map product would look like. It's, it's basically a, an online format. It's interactive, it's meant to be responsive, so you can look at this on your phone and you'll get a slightly different version of it, but it works very well on a phone. Works, you know, so it, it was, it's, it's that kind of web content system thing that responds to the way the device and the size of the screen that you've got. We can put in maps and video and links to other web content, audio, all that kind of stuff. So there can be a lot of, of interactive features. And in many ways, it's sort of like a, a web-based presentation for that, so.
Is it online right now?
It is actually online right now and live. It doesn't have a nice little address that's easy to get to or not.
Oh, it's whatever is up there.
Yeah, it's that thing up there. So, um, I, I published it so that I can actually show it here and I will probably unpublish- Um, so, um, I, I published it so that I can actually show it here, and I will probably unpublish it later, because I'm still working on it, and I don't necessarily need to have Google indexing it yet, but, um, I can turn it on so that we can, um, we can look at it here tonight. Um, so, as a forward to this, um, while this provides a lot of interesting, um, content and ways to use content, it also is, not got a lot of, uh, options, it doesn't give you a lot of options for what it looks like in the end. So, there's literally four templates, and you don't get any choice on the phone, so you don't get any choice on that stuff, so, um, being a designer like I am, this is a, this is a real, I, I'm really stressed about this in some ways, but in other ways, it's, you have to, you have to make this work with a limited palette and, and to styles and what you can do, and there, I mean, there's a ton you can do, but just as a warning, there are some things that just you can't do. So, this would open with a little, um, introduction, this is sort of the introduction that we've been using for the project as a whole, um, here, about what the purpose of the downtown design plan is. And then, this is the table of contents, so, we're going to talk, we're gonna walk through it, um, some, I've started to do some of the background bits, and a little bit of the, um, strategy bit, so you can get some sense of what the content might look like, but most, a lot of this isn't filled in yet. So, um, there's a slide or two that give a background on what good public space is, there's a little bit of a, uh, setting the context for downtown Brattleboro in terms of its physical setting, there's the history of, of the downtown and how it came to be in its current condition and what that is. So, and then we walk through the public spaces, the parks and parking lots and streets, and, um, sort of do an existing conditions kind of summary of those, a lot of that is done. And then, we'll have some slides on the planning process that was undertaken, so the Better Block Challenge, the, um, charrette, well, that'll be mostly the videos and images that we have from those events, or so, that, um, for those of you, I don't know, have they seen the, have they had the links, seen the links to the videos yet? The excellent videos done by Brattleboro Community Town.
I'm not sure if I did, the Better Block one, I think we had sent that out, but.
Yeah. Okay.
I haven't seen it.
No?
Okay, so, so, there's a, a, a nice short, uh, video that really documents the, that activity, it was very interesting. So, that kind of content will be in there, and then, we'll step through the s- public space strategies, and this will be very similar to the format of the presentation I did at the wrap-up for the charrette, where we'll talk through the path idea, and sort of what's along the way of the path, and then come back down Main Street and talk about improvements along the Main Street Quarter and the pieces that are along Main Street, so it's sort of, um, catch that, and then there's a few additional things at the end around programming and rail travel, and that thing coming in at the end. Um, a next steps piece is some sort of a, sort of project idealist type of, of piece, and then, um, the various credits that we're gonna need to put into the content that we've got in here, so. That's sort of the outline of what you can expect to see. So, this is the public space, um, if you saw the handouts from the charrette, this is essentially that language. I managed to find it, I think, I think this is probably a photo that Stephanie took, uh, from the Elliot Street Block Party this summer. Talking, you know, a bit more about what, what is good public space, this is actually, we'll show just, uh, we'll, we won't watch the whole thing, cause it goes for like seven minutes, but this is a, just a video that, a montage of photos of public spaces, that the Project for Public Spaces has done from, so it's photos from around the world of, of interesting public spaces, so, carries on like this. Uh, in the middle somewhere, I think, is the most important run, there's a good six photos or so that focus on ice cream as being incredibly important. There's just photo after photo of people eating ice cream in public spaces, so that's, that's good. Um, you know, there's photos in here of, of, of the importance of water in public space, of seating, of, of art, um, types of things that people do in public spaces, how they interact, so it's just, it's just an interesting visual piece here, if I can pop that. So, that's the sort of thing you can do, is that we can drop in video pieces like that, and that's something that the Project for Public Spaces has put up on, on YouTube and is available. And then this is a, the little one down here is actually a kind of similar piece, but it actually, um, is a more of a document around William H. White, who was known as Holly White, um, who is really the planner and researcher and, um, mind behind the whole science of what makes good public space. Um, so, I know you guys have looked at Bryant Park, that he was a major contributor to the design work and the philosophy behind Bryant Park, um, and he also wrote a, a book, you know, Urban Life, The Social Life of Small Urban Spaces, um, which this has some clips, you know, takes, you can pop this up, and some sort of thing you can do with this, you can pop this up, and it's, again, it's, it's images and sort of what it is we're looking for, um, in good public space, and there he is. So, the movable chair, um, which is the Bryant Park idea, right, um, that type of thing, so, these are for people who wanna, you know, explore the ideas a little bit more, they can go in and get a little more depth through these pieces of it. And then, we come into the, setting the stage for Brattle, downtown Brattleboro, um, doing some physical setting on the location, and once again, these map pieces, you know, people can, I haven't added much to this one, right now it just has a pin that says Brattleboro's here, but, um, I may actually add some additional content to that, but you can see that you can zoom maps up to the screen, pop them back, drop them in and around the text.
So, that one's really dark, is that?
That one's dark.
Is that just your design or is that?
No, it is, it is a dark background on that map, I actually might change that map out, that's, it's a little template that they've got, if you wanna basically do a pin on a map type of map, and it's, it's got the dark, it's got the dark canvas background that Ezra uses, so, that's what it is, yeah. It's, it's a little better here on my screen than it is, um.
Projecting.
Projecting it with the light on it, and as you zoom in, it does get more of the streets, you're not seeing the streets up there, they're not making it through the projector. And of course, we're in like East Wall in Vermont at this point, and there aren't very many streets, so. But, um, yeah, that one is a dark, um, color base, but. The idea would be to give some sense of location, I actually think this is probably not the right map, I'll probably do a different one, because, um, it doesn't really have roads as highlighted as much as I'd like them to be, so. I'm still working on it, still working on it, but concept is there.
I think it is.
So, the, uh, Public Works Drone has taken a lot of really nice, uh, photos of downtown of Brattleboro, and so, I've, I've now got a wealth of excellent imagery to work from, which is great, so we're sort of getting a sense of downtown sitting into the landscape here that I think is pretty interesting. So, I think, you know, there'll be more to be added in here, a little bit more, um, so, terrain, water resources, we'll talk a bit about the history, and what brought people to locate here in the first place, water power. This is the first of the bigger maps that I've got dropped in here, and so this is the historic, this is the eighteen eighty-five Sanborn Map, and you can actually zoom in.
Wow.
And see.
And that's very helpful.
Look at Harmony Park. So, this is, this is, and this is a bit, there was, there was some buildings here, but there was a bit of a park as well, um, at, in eighteen eighty-five.
Wow.
This is actually, uh, of the, I mean, downtown Brattleboro by eighteen eighty-five is largely what it's, what's there now, I mean, it's, they are, you know, it's, it's eighty percent the same, you know, type of thing, but this spot where Harmony is, uh, is actually one of the spots that has probably changed the most over time. Um, it's, it's, it's been, it's, there's been parking lot there, there's been green space there, there's been buildings of different sorts there, um, over time, so it's kind of an interesting, interesting study, but, you know, you can zoom in, you can pull around and, um, do that sort of thing, so. So, that's that map, and, um, you know, you can drop in some historic photos, right now, these do not click and open, I'm hoping that that's one of the things that they're gonna make happen pretty soon. You can actually force it if you want to, to get in here, but it's still pretty small, so. You know, it's probably gonna, oh, yeah, it's gonna jump me all the way back to the beginning, so I'll do that again. Down here, okay. So, talk a little bit about the transportation network, um, and how that developed.
Is that one of the drone pictures?
Yeah, this one, the drone, these are.
These photos are amazing, I, I've found good photos of Brattleboro and, uh, you know, they're so limited out there.
Mm-hmm. I'm sure I've got that.
Yeah. Well, I was re- I was really excited to get these from the, from the drone, so, I told them that, that, everything was perfect, except there wasn't traffic, any traffic congestion,
This is awesome. I love that.
Goodness.
Oh, yeah.
There's one car waiting.
So, like, my car, I didn't.
What, what did it was this?
Actually, right behind them, there's a whole.
This is not an accurate depiction of.
Yeah, but there's nothing the other way, it comes out the truth.
No, there's nothing, they haven't backed up yet, but, um, but, yeah, this is a great, um, map of, of.
That's a great picture. Early spring.
And actually, this map over here is very interesting too, so this is actually a map from eighteen forty-eight, and this line right here, north, for some reason, it's facing to the right, but this is the railroad, right, and this is the bridge, right here, the railroad, this is the year the railroad got this far, it hadn't gone any further yet. Um, so, there's no, you can see it doesn't continue to the north, it's just kind of interesting to think that, the railroad, it was right there, and that was the farthest it went.
Huh.
Yeah.
Great.
So, where did it?
So, interesting, so it just.
See, we're in the process of building it.
It came to Brattleboro and stopped.
Yeah, it didn't, the next chunk, you know, they were building.
I'll be building.
Isn't that the, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Isn't that the north?
No, this is to the south.
Yeah, that's, that's like Debo's Road.
Oh, okay, oh, there it is, okay, I just said it myself.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it, you have to kind of tilt your brain, and it, I think it's, it's a hand-drawn map from eighteen forty-eight, it's not exactly cartographically perfect, but you can see that the basic street grid is exactly the same, and this was, was pretty much there, um, without too much change to it, to this day, so. Um, so, we'll do a little bit of that, uh, talk a little bit about infrastructure and, um, I haven't got any text in there, but, the good photo of, of digging up the street, digging up the infrastructure, um, I believe some of it was from the eighteen hundreds in this hall, probably. Yeah, Joshua, they found the eighteen eighties pipe, that one's what broke.
Yeah, eighteen eighties what?
It was eighteen eighties pipe that broke.
Oh. It lasted a long time.
Yeah.
You got that ready for on that one, I gotta say.
It was a pretty good pipe, I gotta say. So, so that's one sort of style of how the story map goes, so you sort of see you're kind of going down through it vertically, flowing down through, and then you can have little pull-out, um, sort of presentations, so these go horizontally when we might talk, so this would be some of the, um, survey results can get put in here, um, and I'm just gonna do some little summary about what's going on from a business perspective, housing perspective, uh, from the major institutions downtown, and then the planning and zoning, this would be a place to put your zoning map, the downtown, the designated downtown, the lines, that kind of thing can go in here. And once again, this is, you know, it's a live map, which you can, you can add more layers to as you move around, I just don't have them in here yet. And, so, that's sort of the slideshow component. And then, we're down to the part where we're walking through the inventory of the public spaces, um, so these have, a couple of these have maps that go along with them here on the side, so you can actually click on a, um, point on the map, so Pliny Park, and there's some description of it, there's a photo, um, going on, so people can, can get in there and, um, learn more about the spaces.
Randy, have you seen any story map presentations with like a how-to, you know, how intuitive is it, I know.
I actually think, I think that the might, up at the table of contents, that that might actually be necessary.
Yeah.
Um, they do, you might notice that there is, like, up at the top, there was that little arrow, I don't think it is, um, quite enough to sort of explain to people, um, to look for the arrows, to sort of tell you which way you can navigate through it, but, um. I, like, here, I did say you can click on the circles.
No, that's good though, I think that's important, because.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that, I, you know.
There's a lot of stuff in here that you could.
Yeah.
I like the hu- the historical elements a lot, like the old photos and stuff, the movie maps.
Yeah, well, there's gonna be more, yeah, we'll have more of those as we go along, it's really good ones. So, then, um, just, this is a place where I put some of the, the infographics from the survey report here, um, and some of the comments that we've gotten, um. So, this is some of the areas where I don't really have any design control, and it sort of irritates me, so, this is, the, there's the paragraph text, and there's the quote text, and that's just the way it is.
And the quote text is bigger.
The quote text is bigger, and then, yeah, that's really irritating me, but it's the way it is.
Hmm.
So, um.
It's like a full quote.
Hmm?
Yeah, a full quote size.
Yeah, 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 it's just like, uh, but, it's what it does.
Yeah.
So, we saw these, obviously, this is just a written discussion of what we just looked at, so this is actually one of the photo preference, um, results pages. So, these were the parks and playing spaces, um, one that asked people which they'd like to see, so, um, people expressed interest in the pocket parks, the greenways, um, performance areas, you know, there's, the Hard Surface Plaza one, I think, and the playground, which people, on taking the survey, I think were, didn't have a lot of, perhaps, people with young children who were looking for playgrounds, um, necessarily taking the survey. And here on the side, this is a place to put in some of what's going on, um, other, in other components of what's going on in downtown Brattleboro, so this is some of the, looking at the alley along the Transportation Center and the block party that happened there, and we're here this year, so that might expand actually a bit as we go along.
Do you think people had the, um, an idea of the differentiation between a pocket park and a park lot?
Um, the.
Or might they be?
I don't know that people did, I think they responded to what they saw in the image, uh, and the pocket park showed, it was bigger and, and it had more green in it, and, uh,
So, right, it was, it was responding to the image, okay.
I think it was more the image than the words necessarily, yeah. So, similarly, walk through the parking lots, um, so if we click on, we'll click on our favorite, Harmony, um, so, the po- I used the information and incorporated the information from your parking study into here, so if people click on a parking lot, they can actually learn some information about that parking lot, like how many spaces there are, um, how much use it was getting, and that's where the, the counts that were taken in twenty seventeen, um, so we can see what occupancy of these parking lots is. And then, these are some charts and graphs based off the data in the parking plan, um, as well, and there's a link, if you were to click on the link, you'd go and you'd to the document that's on your website, the parking plan.
Is the custom lot on the previous map?
It is.
It is, okay, I'm gonna see it.
Um, yep.
Oh, there it is, I see it, great, number five, okay, I'm just gonna carry.
Yep, there it is, right there.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we're looking through parking, sort of the difference, and what, really the message that comes out of this, and looking at both the survey results and the stuff of the parking study, which had a survey and their analysis, it's fairly, it's, 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 it's similar. There, people's sense that there isn't parking is that what parking there is, there are access issues, yeah, so, um, it's really more about the pedestrian experience, once you've parked the car, than it is, um, about the, the parking itself, um, so.
What do you mean, what do you mean by, like, like, parking your car and having to walk to the store?
It's interesting.
Walking is not the problem, people, the, the, I mean, the distance isn't the problem, it's the wa- it's the experience of the walk, is it, um, is the sidewalk, you know, are there condition issues that make the sidewalk difficult to walk on, you know, some places, it's the steepness issues that are problematic for people, narrowness of the sidewalk, the traffic, you know, needing to cross streets, and some people not liking to do that, um, busy traffic, um.
So, you don't mean just parking your car and getting out of the parking lot safely?
No, it's the experience you have as a pedestrian after you've parked the car that's influencing people's thoughts about parking downtown, yeah.
It could be lighting.
Lighting. Lighting, sense of safety on the street.
It could be space, yes.
Um, so, um, so in the, um, parking survey that was done, um, so when asked, like, why people parked where they did, why did they chose to park, their reasons, distance wasn't the reason. It was weather, the type of park, of parking facility, and their sense of safety, um, which were the driving faci- the driving decisions. Um, and that's what, in looking at the written comments, you get a lot of sense of, um, you know, several people mentioned the, 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 in the parking lots, they prefer to park on the street because of the meters. Are easier to deal with than the kiosks. Um, so for a lot of people, I mean, if you, if you think that, you know, you have either a mobility challenge or, um, you have, um, a couple of kids in tow, having to get out of your vehicle in one of these parking lots, go to the meter, kiosk, get your ticket, take it back to the car, and then go to your destination, this could be viewed as a hassle. Or, you know, something, or, or worse, or something that is not really doable for you.
Park Smarter app is great.
Yeah.
Yes.
Really is.
Maybe there is a difference between when the parking study was done and now we do.
Yeah. Well, those, those came up in the comments now too, so I don't know how widespread the app is becoming, but.
I don't know if that many people know about it.
And don't know.
Yeah.
First time I heard about it.
Me neither.
Oh, it's fabulous. You can add time, um, remotely.
You can do it for here?
Yeah, and he, it just, it figures out where you are, and you kind of confirm that's, that's where I am, and it works for the.
Yeah.
But we'll download it, it's like, well, no.
You need to, you need more advertising.
Heartbeat Smarter. Yep, Heartbeat Smarter.
And you don't have to print out a little ticket?
No.
You just put in your driver, your license plate number?
And the meter people know that that's your car from.
Yeah, I could use it, so I don't know.
Oh, wow, I used to watch.
Yeah.
Print can do us.
I'm gonna download the app right now.
Although I have to, because, but I can use it because I'm usually walking from here, or, and then every time I am parking downtown, I'm like, oh, I should have had the app, and I just, I'm not gonna download it while I'm not online, so I just need to do it.
I'm just not gonna. So, um, so yeah, so it goes through the parking, and basically making the argument around, and, and setting, providing the data around how much parking is actually available and how much is used, which is an important basis for then the discussion of strategy for when you come. Um, looking at the streets and sidewalks, um, piece, I have a debate about whether to use this photo or not. It's a great photo of Main Street, but it's a funeral procession.
Oh, no.
Do people know if it's a funeral procession? I'm trying to get an opinion.
Some, some people might.
I would not, wait, where are your, where's the, the cars?
Well, the, the, it's, there's a public works being put in it, so some people might.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a funeral procession for the public works, I guess.
Yeah. Somebody for public works.
Yeah. It's a really great shot of Main Street. It's not a problem.
I mean, it's a funeral, it's real.
Yeah.
Or is it, does it feel, does it feel disrespectful? That'd be the only thing, but.
I don't know. I don't think it feels.
Nothing wrong with it being a funeral.
It's a first.
Yeah.
It's got the, uh.
I mean, I can see something, I've been noticing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
What I noticed is that massive truck right there, that shouldn't be there.
Yeah.
That's what I noticed.
Well, we're coming up to a discussion of that.
Right. That's not typical.
Yeah. So one of the things that, um, so just as a point of reference, there's twenty-three acres of land in the railroad, in the street railway in downtown, so, and overall, on the side of downtown, this is a lot of, of the actual square footage that we're talking about. Um, and then I think it's sort of interesting to run down the list of what it is you're doing with that space. There's a lot of competing demands on the space. Um. So, in the survey, you see it, the idea that basically the sidewalks are cramped, or crowded, or congested. Um, and just that feeling of, of inadequate space. And I'm actually gonna change out this cross-section, um, a little bit. I've now gotten more precise measurements, thanks to, uh, better imagery.
Yeah, they're much closer together.
Which.
Right.
Um, actually, there, it, it, I'm gonna have a drawing that comes up, but there are, it does range. The curb to curb width ranges, it actually goes down further than fifty, the, more of it's forty-two. Um, but it does actually reach a point where it's seventy feet wide from curb to curb.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it's not consistent at all, uh, through, through the length of Main Street. Um, and the sidewalk widths do vary from five to ten, um, feet as well, along the way.
From what, Sarah?
Five to ten.
Five, yeah.
Wow. Look at these, I really want to know.
Yeah. So, this section goes through basically, is, you know, it's data, it's, it's background information about traffic flow and how much, where the, where vehicles are turning, how many tra- what amount of traffic there is. Traffic counts in downtown Brattleboro haven't been done that frequently, um, and consistently, so it's, it's, it's a bit hard. If you look at this infographic, there's one, um, the High-Main Street intersection was done in twenty eighteen. You've got a twenty thirteen, a two thousand and nine, a two thousand and eight, and those are the most frequent counts at those intersections. The all, the continuous counter that probably gives you the best data is, which is a chart from, is the one that's on the West River Bridge, the north, you know, north of the. So, but overall, traffic is actually down over time.
Really?
Yeah. In the line, the line goes down. So there is less, there are less vehicles going, traveling downtown, you know, on, on, on Main Street than there were twenty years ago.
Two thousand or so?
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a huge difference, but it's less. So that chart's going from fourteen thousand to eighteen thousand.
That's our minus, a little plus.
Yeah.
And, and that's on I ninety-one?
No, this is on downtown, Main Street.
Downtown, Main Street.
West River Bridge.
It's at the West River Bridge, just at the north. And, so. This is a, this one's counted continuously. I mean, there would be, obviously, you've got, the numbers will be slightly different in the heart of downtown because you've got, you know, more, but the overall trend, I think, in traffic would be fairly reflective of this. And, um, an interesting point is that, while you do see that little peak, um, right here in this chart, that's when they were building the bridge on eighty, on ninety-one.
Oh, so.
So if you actually think about it, it's that, um, really.
So what you're being, where's, sorry.
Wow.
It goes from nineteen ninety-eight to twenty eighteen.
And it's down that, some standard.
It's down.
About two thousand.
Two thousand, a little more, twenty, two thousand, twenty-five hundred vehicles.
That's kind of striking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any, anything to account for that, the, the economy?
I, I would contribute it to being like reputation, like it was, don't, don't go downtown.
No, I think, it, 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 if, I think that if you went on almost any segment of Route Five in Vermont, this would, the overall trend would be the same. The, the economy of Vermont has been slowly declining for a long time.
Hmm.
You know, so this is just reflective of economic trends.
Hmm. That's crazy, 'cause it feels like there's more traffic.
It may feel like there's more traffic.
Move so slowly.
But there's, there, actually.
Maybe it's 'cause it moves so slowly, because they put in that traffic light, disruption junction.
Goddamn roundabouts.
Maybe everyone's vehicles are bigger. They just have cars.
Yeah, I guess we could add a, rather chart, another line to the graph about the size of vehicles. So we also get down to talking about the truck traffic. Um, so six percent of the vehicles, um, coming through downtown are, uh, larger trucks. Um, and the count that was done in twenty eighteen at Main and High gives a pretty good, um, assessment of, um, when that truck traffic, how much truck traffic there is, and when it occurs. So there was about seven hundred and fifty trucks through that intersection on the days that they counted. So they counted on two days between six and six AM and six PM. Um, in the, what is it, in June of twenty eighteen. Am I need to spin along? Um, so, so about seven hundred and fifty trucks came through during that twelve-hour period, but there's a peak, and there's a, a lot more, there's more truck traffic in the morning. There's more trucks going north, and the peak was about eight thirty to nine thirty in the morning, and there was a hundred and one trucks going through that intersection at that, in that one hour. So it's not an even flow through the day, um.
These aren't necessarily just eighteen-wheelers, though.
No, it's, it's large.
They could be smaller, they could be box trucks, and things like that.
They need box trucks, or.
Okay.
Yeah.
Still a lot of trucks.
Yeah, commercial, larger, wider asshole.
That is a lot of trucks.
So obviously, we heard a lot of concern about the truck traffic, and so I actually put some language in here as sort of background, so people understand what is happening and why trucks are coming through. It's the weight limits question, um, and, you know, the feasibility of creating a truck route, you know, is not, is not really a viable option. You'd have to take out a neighborhood somewhere, in Brattleboro to make it happen, you know? There's just nowhere to bring another route through that you're not impacting someone. So, I think if there was an obvious truck route, probably it would have been built, you know, that option would have been explored, because clearly the truck issue has been there for a long time. And then trying to point towards improving flow essentially downtown as the one thing in municipality can do to help address the problem. Because clearly, the braking and starting of the trucks as they come up the hill, particularly for the thing that can go down as well and hit the traffic lights, um, there's, is, is a lot to do with the noise generation, because when the vehicles are moving, you know, at a consistent speed, they actually make a lot less noise than when they're starting and stopping, and I, we. So, here we have a photo from nineteen forty-one showing this car congestion issue, not a new one. Um, so, you know, talking a bit about the intersections. A nice classic seventies photo of malfunction junction.
Oh, no.
Oh, huh?
Not very many cars.
You don't have many cars right now. There's also no lights, no lines, no crosswalks.
When did the lights go in there at malfunction junction?
Relatively recently.
Yeah, four years ago, they redid it.
Yeah, well, when, when they redid the.
Feel like they've been there since I got to town, which was early two thousands, so maybe some point in the nineties.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were here when I got to town in ninety-seven.
Well, no, there's, yeah.
They were not?
There used to be a flashing yellow and flashing red, and then they put it on.
Could be early two thousand.
Yeah.
I thi- I think it's when they redid.
I had the O three, and it was.
Project or the, the, the repa- the repainting, well, the repainting project?
No, it was before the COOP project.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they did that in anticipation for the COOP, if I remember, it wasn't that long, it was like five years ago.
Yeah.
No.
They were really recently. There used to be a flash in like, uh.
It was not five years ago.
Six years?
They were here, I think, in, uh, by O three.
When was the COOP built?
The new one?
Yeah.
Twenty twelve, twenty, yeah, twenty twelve.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, then, good.
So, the, yeah, I mean, the plans, the V-Trans plans that I finally have gotten a hold of, they drew those in the early two thousands, and they have the signalized stuff on them. So that, that actually might be when they put the signals in.
Yeah, might be early.
So I think those, the actual drawing dates of those are like two thousand and two, or two thousand and three.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, then we start talking about, um, bike, um, pedestrian facilities. I'm really hoping I am gonna be able to get these photos to zoom up, because this is a great photo from nineteen oh seven of the street. So this is actually made at the bridge, the Redstone Bridge, looking north, and, um, the trolley tracks are in place. There's horse and cart, there's pedestrians, there's a couple people on a bicycle, and there's a dog running amok. Um, all in the photo, so it's a really, it's a fun, um, photo.
Complete streets.
It's a very complete street. Um, so, and this is one of the survey, the, the photo survey. People, um, asked what kind, bike, you know, facilities and amenities they'd like to see. Basically, people would like to bike where there aren't cars. Um, so the, 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 the options that show the bikes separated from the vehicle traffic were the highest, um, rated, um, there. So we're talking a bit about bicycling. Um, pulling in some of the stuff that was done, um, in twenty-ten from the Marwood College project, which had very similar results in terms of what people wanted to see, um, down by the river. And then cars have been there for a long time. So this is a nineteen twenties postcard. So the trolley tracks are still in place, so it's from pre, they, they pulled them up in twenty-eight, I learned. Um, or twenty-three, nineteen twenty-three, so somewhere in that range. So this is an early twenties postcard. Um, showing the street, you know, I think probably configured pretty much with, I bet you width-wise, it's pretty much same curb to curb as, as, as it is today. Those, those cars were actually pretty small. They were like parking a bunch of minis along the street like that. Um, so the other thing we can do, this, um, the Brattleboro Historical Society has a bunch of historic podcasts. So this one tells the story of the trolley.
This podcast of local.
So you can actually play that. Yeah, we're not gonna listen to the whole thing, but needless to say, there was a lot of controversy about the trolley. Probably finally got built, and they were there for twenty-eight years, so.
What was the controversy? Again, I'll have to listen to the thing.
Well, it was, it was, you listened to the podcast. It was, the, the, um, they, they, they used the threat of it being dangerous as the reason to oppose it. But I don't know what caused someone to want to oppose it in the first place. Um, I think it was one of those things where they felt the state was telling them that they were, had to do something. It was a usurped, little, local control that really got people agitated.
Cool.
Um, so, and then we've got what pedestrian facilities and amenities people would like to see. Um, and again, the, these spaces, sidewalk cafes, people really, a lot of these were quite popular. Art and music, more seating, lighting, good cards. They liked these areas. Some comments from people who took the survey, some more photos showing the sidewalks, that kind of thing. So that gets us through basically the inventory of what's, what's here and what the issues are, and some facts and, and, um, information to help inform the recommendations that follow. Like I said, this is gonna do the inform, the background on the.
I'll send you the video.
Planning process. You can watch the video. Don't do it. They're not gonna do it right, I'll start with you.
I don't want to.
Oh, you don't want to see soon?
Yeah.
Just play, play the first minute.
I still did a great job.
There, there you go.
Really?
You, you, you're filmed, like, monthly or more, I see. People can be watching you on YouTube constantly.
For almost twenty years now.
I know, they can go back through the archives and see. See you.
We had a show in Merrimack, a weekly show.
Yeah, so all, there's more stuff that's gonna get dropped in here, but that'll basically just be a summary of that. So then we finally actually come to the strategies, the public space strategies. Um, so the first one will be to walk through the, um, the bridge, or the bridge, the, the path, um, starting with the Bridge Street area, and then moving north, um, and ending, I'd like to end at the comment there, so that we sort of do that whole stretch. I don't have any of this content in here, but you saw some of that from the, um, presentation, at the rapid presentation for the charrette. So that material will get put in here. This will flow, then I said, will come back down Main Street, and so this goes to being one of the side-moving presentations here. Um, and I wanna, I've got a couple pieces of this done, so I wanna actually sort of show you what the pieces could look like. And this is where we can start to have a bit of a conversation around what areas you would like to see focused on, um, and what sort of level of detail might be of interest and that kind of thing, so we can help prioritize the, well, the final work here. So this is the one for the library, looking at, um, their front area and side garden. I knew we had to do this one because Paul, the landscape architect I was working with, promised to start, I don't think. Paul's wife is a librarian as well, so I think when a librarian comes around and tells him to do something, he's on it.
Well, it also was part of the Better Block challenge, so I think it is.
It was also Better Block challenge, but he, he really, he like, she pulled him aside, and she, she really got him to promise to work on this, so.
That is strong.
Uh-huh, yeah, yeah. I laughed about it. I said, I told him that he was really accustomed to taking orders from a librarian. Um, so, you know, images, and they started coming up with what the recommendations were that came out of that, which was to level the front, provide outdoor seating, improve the access to the side garden, and provide a sign, a different sign that really was more visible, um, from the street. So this is a sketch of what that. So, this is a sketch of what that could look like. And so, this is sort of the format that we're thinking of for more of these sites, so there'll be some photos, some text, and in some cases, some drawings like this. We're envisioning what, what could be done at the space.
It would be great to have seating out there.
Yeah, yeah.
A place to have lunch and people watch.
Yeah, this, this section of the street is actually at a very weird angle in, like, three dimensions, weird angle. It, it, it's going in, you know, different directions laterally and such, but there still is, those planters around the trees are actually very large. If you actually go out there and measure like what the size of those planters are, if you were to rearrange that and get the grade more leveled out, the planter, you could sort of rid of the planter box component, and then there would be a lot more floor space, shall we say, to work with around them, so.
I like how that wall naturally creates seating.
Yeah, so you could do that kind of a, an edge treatment, and it would tie in a lot more, I think, to the architecture of the building as well. And then, you know, the shrub that's here is just. That, it's just, it's overgrown. It's overstating its welcome.
There's a lot of, like, tension, there's a lot of friction trying to get to the library.
Yeah.
Unless certain planters are part of that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a shrub that's outside its welcome.
A natural.
Those trees can't go anywhere.
Brandon, you have the answer to that shrub.
No, yeah, I do. Yeah, I'm just, it, it's, it's, it's too big. The trees, no, I mean, the trees are, are, are there, they're remarkably healthy even where they are. I'm sure that, they're actually too close to the building, technically accurate about the whole thing, but no one's gonna take those down and make this point. So, other things we might look at here would be the Harris parking lot area, and the area around the rec center. I think these are just gonna be short little pieces. I know, I haven't fixed it yet.
I think I've told you that before.
I know, I just haven't done anything with it yet. I still have the word programming spelled wrong in here, too. Plenty, Plenty Park piece is, is somewhat done here. So, this would be, I think we could do something probably a little bit more detailed than this for Harmony, I think was my sense of what the priority is. And you've got some plans for Preston already that we could show. And then talk about how to balance out the parking versus green space in the, so. You know, so I'm sort of seeing these set up as a little background on the space, a bit of an assessment about how it functions. So, this is, you know, a place to drop in the information that we got from the survey. In terms of how the place is used, what people wanted to see done. Recommendations would be to open this up. This has actually got a fairly big, in reality, but it, most of the space isn't usable. It's, it's because of the design, you actually are not getting much advantage out of the actual amount of area there was. There was a dime, and there was a gas station there, right? You know, it's not a small site, so.
And the seating doesn't encourage interaction, because it's all, you know, everybody just.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the bus shelter is just so oversized to.
And it blocks the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So, so one thing that I think some of these, this, I've got up here, it's sort of like, I don't know that I like this format, but basically an inspiration wall, where you think about some of the things, the ideas that could be incorporated into the space.
Idea for movable chairs.
Yeah, movable chairs, something that would bring more light. In to the space, providing, you know, some sort of cover canopy, the art, that type of thing.
You know, the youth I worked with bicycle, they loved the art big gloves idea.
You're just gonna say the art big gloves. I really liked the pavement big gloves.
Yes.
Anything that was like color or light, they really enjoyed.
And so, if you were to take those ideas and sort of open that up, the space up, and you could actually move the existing design in this direction, I think, by, with a little bit of work of eliminating the walls and fences and the, the bus shelter, which is. Now, even if it was, you could almost even turn the existing structure.
And be against.
Right.
Put it against the wall, it would, it would still be.
You could provide the shelter, or you could do it a different way, with a different type of shelter.
Yeah, with a different, you know, this is, you know, the more sort of urban plexiglass.
Yeah.
Oning type thing, but, you know, it's obviously the natural thing, is that people would want to cut through this space, and because there's just the two designated entrances in or out, it isn't really a space that you can cut through and move through, and so that, I think when we go back to the, do you spend any time here question? You have, you know, you're not gonna just wander through Plenty Park necessarily, you, you go in there.
You go in there.
You're going in there, right? There's a destination for a reason.
And then you're static in there, because it's like nothing to do except sit.
Around the edge.
Around the edge, waiting for something to happen in front of you that never happens. Something in the middle is supposed to happen.
Yeah.
There's interest in having half of that covered bus station be covered bike parking.
Yeah.
There's some need for.
Bike parking, yeah, I mean, and, I mean, I think that having a covered space is a great idea. The question is whether it needs to be oriented along the sidewalk like that and creating a barrier. I mean, because the sidewalk feels very cramped here too, right? And you feel very close to the traffic, and it, it is just, it's not open. It doesn't feel expansive, and I think that's actually a theme with a lot of the public spaces that you do have in downtown Brabro. You actually go around and look at them more carefully, see how many of them have fences, how many of them have walls or hedges. There's a lot of effort to defining edge and, and creating a barrier, and I think that was a reaction to, there's a lot of traffic on the street. And so, what we need to do is create a barrier, but in some ways, that further intensifies, first of all, the feeling of how much traffic there is when you're on the sidewalk. Because it's, you're, you can't get away from it, there's no, you don't have any sense that there's space adjacent anymore, this sort of visual sense. And then, yeah, you don't have, you don't have those opportunities to take an alternate path, I guess. So, yeah, so that's the sort of thing that I envision we might do. The Harmony Lot idea, which during the charrette, we looked at turning at least one of the bays, the double bays, into park space. And then during the walking tour, the idea of, yes, what you came up with, which was.
I didn't come up with.
Yeah, I mean, there should be no.
It just makes sense.
There should be no cars here at all.
Yeah.
Questions came up, but I, there's, that, there is some complications. Yeah, so it's not all public, but it's gonna always have to be access at a certain amount, and there's a drive-through bank.
Yeah, no, I recognize that.
So, there's some.
Can't we take it from them? What is that called when the government comes in? Yeah, eminent domain.
I don't, I don't think we're going to take that.
But it just makes so much sense, you know, and it'd be so helpful to the community.
I know why you want to take that.
Why? Because it's an awesome space.
It's an awesome space.
Yeah, so, so moving forward through here. I'm almost done with that section. So, this has got a question here about bike lanes, so obviously bike lanes came up, yeah, that's one of the ones I need to get permission to for.
Oh, yeah, it really demonstrates the.
Yeah.
Hideousness of trying to bike in town.
So, I think the question of bike lanes is one that has to be answered. So, this, this goes through what the requirements are from an engineering and safety point of view, of what kind of, what amount of space you need for them. You need at least five feet, really should be six, but you could legally get in the way with five. But even at five, you can't get them in down here by Flat Street, there is not enough room. The only option really would be to take down the latches, I don't think.
Oh, let's do that.
Dominique.
I don't think. So, there's actually just physically not enough room, the buildings are, are not far enough apart to, to have enough room for the traffic.
But if the arid museum is building.
Yeah, but it isn't just that building, it's the other one too, and it's the really lovely historical with the picture proof that everyone loves.
Oh, that's such a pretty building.
Yeah, see, that's a pretty building. Yeah, so that, that whole little piece in there is, is constrained, and then, like I said, that the, the widths vary. So, this part that's blue in here, this between Elliot and Hyde, this is the wide piece, there's, there's a lot of room there. If you were, particularly to get rid of the.
Parking on one side.
One side, two sides, fix the, narrow down the lane, there's a lot of room that could be theoretically pulled out of here. This is, this gets very wide, this, the buildings are seventy-five feet apart at their widest point there, so there's a lot of room. But then, this narrows up, so most of it, most of the rest of it is right around forty-two to maybe forty-eight inch feet. So, that means you can put, if you got rid of the parking, you could put in the bike lanes, but you're not gonna get wider sidewalks, so it's an either-or choice, really.
Who are even upset in the other choice?
Well, it, it's really what makes the most sense in terms of benefits and use of the space. And to think about that, and you, because, I mean, in my mind, if you can't get the bike lanes all the way through, then I think their effectiveness is, is significantly reduced, and it would require also eliminating, they're all the on-street parking. You'd be able to get a little bit of on-street parking in this block with, you know, so there could be some, probably, you know, some drop-off in accessible handicap spaces, but it pretty much means no parking as well to do it. So, I think that points to the importance of the path as, as being the obvious better option to bike actual designated bike lanes on Main Street.
And I think, I think too, that, in an ideal world, it would be great to have some sort of big bike lanes on Main Street, but where's the bigger benefit in, I think, having a wider sidewalk where you could have more of the street, you know, cafes or, you know, more of that kind of stuff? Because there's still, the topographical challenges of downtown, there's still the truck traffic that might make it feel unsafe for people to bike. So, it's probably still going to be the skilled.
Serious bikers. It's never going to be, even with designated bike lanes, it's not going to be a place that you're going to bike as a casual or a national cyclist.
Is there a way of sharing the lane with, you know, being more aware as a, as a driver?
I mean, you can sign it and designate, you know, do the things for, and I mean, I think that's, yeah, that's, the people who are biking now, I mean, I think as much as you can get on your bike and act like you're a vehicle, maybe.
I observe people all the time on Putney Road driving their cars in the bike lane. Like, as it's a passing lane or whatever, and it's just like.
Wow.
Yeah, it makes, gives me like no hope for bike lanes in that. You know, people are just gonna get hurt, and it's because drivers don't share the road with bicyclists, and they don't know how, they're not educated anymore, so I'm not sure what happened.
There's a way to create barriers and so on, so it's not just paint, because, yeah, cyclists don't, don't feel safe when it's just.
I mean, I could see some of my thinking in going and trying to go, well, we're hitting a biker, this is.
It's gonna get better.
Happens all the time.
Yes, it does, yeah.
They will have an off-street.
So, the other.
That's detached.
The other implication of, of adding the bike lanes, it requires reconfiguration of the travel lanes. And right now, the way the travel lanes are set up, there's space for cars to line up at the intersection, right, stacking room. So, when the light turns, how many cars can you basically get parked at a red light in, in that block? And while you, you can definitely narrow the lanes, doing that, because of how it does that thing where, there's a, you know, you think of the, the two straight up and down with south lanes, and then there's that lane that's for turning, and essentially, at one, at one intersection, it's a left-hand turn one way, and then you get down the other, so. But that transitions over the course of the block, so it's sort of like it makes this diagonal, and where it makes that diagonal, it's making extra space. So, the lanes, it's like there's, there's, it's not really like there's three lanes, except at the actual ends, right, at each end of the block. In the middle, there's like this extra half space, but it's enough that you can stack cars up, right, at the intersection. And if you narrow the lanes down, that's possible, but then you're gonna put less cars in them when the red, light turns red. So, that could actually be part of a congestion problem in downtown Brabro too. So, these are like the factors that you have to weigh back and forth against, you know, what, which, which, how much space to give to the cars, how much, whether to give space to bicycles, whether to give space to pedestrians, you know, and how much, so there's a, it's, it's a fairly complicated set of factors that influence that. You know, we can say, this is how much space there is, and then it's a really a question of allocating that space. And so, I'm, I'm hoping that we can sort of make that, that, that sort of choice thing clear in this story map, format, that you really, you, you, you know, you have to balance off and weigh the, and prioritize, because it's not, you get a hundred percent of everything, and that would be the same with the parking lot park question. You know, how much green space can we add into these parking lots, how much pedestrian walkway area can we add into the parking lots while still keeping enough parking spaces? And if you want to eliminate, you know, an entire parking lot, say Preston to make a park, or Harmony to make a park, then, you know, what does that mean in terms of the overall supply? Or you want to get rid of one or two lanes of parking on Main Street, you know, so it's a supply question too. So, I think we're gonna have a lot of ideas in here for improvements, but they're not all achievable altogether, right? It's, it's choices. So, moving through that, and then a little brief thing will be one for Elliot Street, one for Flat Street, some discussion of the intersection, we've got some thoughts on that from the charrette, the rail trail, this whole discussion of parking, they're weighing off the choices, that would go here. And then programming without the, and. So, that's the story map, so those are the kind of things that we can do with it. I think it's a fairly engaging and interesting way to present the downtown plan. So, the real question is, we've got a certain amount of time and a certain amount of budget left, and we want to focus those time, those hours and dollars on the things that are most important to you all, so I think my sense is that Harmony is on that list.
What were, what were you?
Well, there's a question of whether to do more, more, more around this building, around the municipal building area. That was one of the areas we could look at in more detail. The question of looking at High Grove in more detail from a stormwater perspective, that's the one place that Amy thought there was some reasonable opportunity to put in some green stormwater infrastructure.
So, that's the parking lot up at the, huh. Well, that would be nice, because I think that space is in the morning potential.
And you had asked about the Depot Riverfront property too, about how, what level of detail we were going to go into for that.
I think a lot of people, what they wanted to see there was, they wanted to see more than just that one picnic table. They wanted to see, you know, like, the youth talked about a concert kind of venue.
I think the.
Access to the water.
I like the idea of, first of all, my thoughts on Harmony is that there is some work that's been done. So, I'm not sure, I don't, and I know it's not full park, but there's been ideas in the past for full parks there. So, to me, there's been some work done, I'm not sure that it needs to go further, because it'll show up in here, I'm imagining this stuff from the charrette. High Grove lot, I think that seems pretty exciting if there's a stormwater opportunity there.
Yeah, that seemed to be the most likely candidate for any sort of stormwater. As soon as you got much lower than that, Amy thinks that you have infiltration and potential pollution problems, that you don't actually want infiltrate water. So, green stormwater infrastructure is actually not that great of an idea for most of downtown.
The municipal center, well, I would love to see some stuff done, I think the town's agreement with, to kind of look at housing here with Women's or Housing Trust, I just, it could be useful to have something that's kind of dealing with the front lawn or using the parking lot, but I'm, I'm not sure. I guess I'd probably want to ask around to see. I guess I'd probably wanna ask around to see if that would be useful. Depot Street and the Riverfront, I mean, I do think with the new bridge and Bridge Street changing and the, you know, future Bike Ped Bridge, I think that a lot of people have been talking about that as kind of this trails hub. And so I would like, I, I think seeing something that's a more programmed space or a more active space than just what's there now would be beneficial.
It would be nice also if this is gonna go, this is gonna be public, to have just all the constraints articulated and not that people are necessarily to read it. But the explanation as to why you can't access the Riverfront, I'd say.
As much as I'm a lover of outdoor recreation and stuff like that, I'd love a, like a little extra emphasis on any proposed change or improvement that can have benefits year-round. So like, you know, widening sidewalks and things. People walk on those just as much December through March and April. But like, people are definitely biking less during our bad six months of the year. People are definitely lounging on the lawns and picnic tables less after the year. So improvements that benefits year-round. I feel like, you know, in our climate compared to Florida, an extra project.
Along that, I don't know if anyone put in there too, like, you know, where to have lunch in public in the winter.
Yeah, River Garden.
Maybe that's the only place.
Yeah.
But it might be kind of interesting. And also I saw a lot of programming, thoughts on programming. And like, even with Piney Park, what would programming look like there? Like, like an active, an activated space somehow? Interesting to see that. And also down on the river. Like if it was a, if there was a stage and a concert going on, what would it look like?
I feel like Harmony could offer basically all of that except for access to the river. You know, or access to the river is almost non-existent anyhow, or not really possible, it seems. I feel like Harmony has like so much potential and so much.
Whatever happened to the Harmony Park? That was created.
It's there.
Green, it's not paid, don't work.
Well, no, there was still the green space on the Backwood House.
There was gonna be a stage and other films and.
There was gonna be a stage and stuff. I don't know if they were not successful fundraising, I don't really know.
Cause they went to the sort of ribbon cutting of that and then.
Is that a Rose House initiative?
Yeah, it was. They were gonna partner with DBA, um, but I'm not really sure. It wasn't a town initiative.
I think the impact of the, he's that bridge change and the pedestrian bike bridge is big. And, and you addressed that some at the summary meeting in terms of the impact of the flow on Main Street. But I, I, you know, I do think that that.
And so that's actually.
It's the change, there's gonna be money, you know, this.
That's actually probably something we should have a further follow-up conversation on. I'm not really that up on where the project is, what the town's current position and level of engagement is such.
On his, right?
So we should just do it.
That's my question is like, that seems all funding, but who's gonna be paying to maintain it? Like, are we gonna still have access to that bridge?
That's the intent.
Yeah, but it's not a hundred percent.
Well, the bridges are staying.
Yeah, but I mean, like, are we gonna be able to utilize them?
Yeah, definitely.
Oh yeah, definitely.
The question of who's gonna pay is still very much on the air, yeah.
Cause last I knew, my understanding was that we weren't sure if we're gonna be able to access them because.
That's pretty definite, there's gonna be a.
It's pretty definite, there's pedestrian.
Okay, good.
There's a, there's a, a group that's, a committee that's really trying to make that sure that it does happen, you know, that, that bridge is not forgotten.
Yeah, so whatever, whatever planning work has been okay, whatever, I just need an update and some sort of.
Yeah.
Last meeting that some of us talked about, um, now it, on the surface seems like it's adding another request from you or requirement, but like a single page or poster that's just like shows.
Yep.
It won't show it in detail, but just like, just catches people and just wows everyone with the, all the proposals.
So I didn't go into, so the story map is obviously the primary product. But my intention is to have a short executive summary that would pull from some of the text. I mean, I don't really see that this is a, it's, it's just readapting what's the content that we've got, really. So that you will have a paper thing that you can distribute. And then that, at the li, at the bottom here, we have that project, the project list piece. I would envision that that would also be part of that printed version. And then, um, you have requested, um, sort of a poster map type thing. And I think that's, you know, basically I'm gonna use the template that I used for the Charette mapping. So that's, that exists. And then the illustrations and graphics that are going into here can be used on that and, you know, sort of highlight the ideas that way. So I, it's, it's still, it's doable and I, um, I think that it'll complement this quite well.
So I don't think you got a straight answer.
No. We have a lot of priorities. So if I was to get an architect and a landscape architect to work on like one more thing, what's the one more thing? I guess it's the, the core of the question. Like what area is the most important?
And, and the bridge, if it's actually gonna be like accessible to the public most.
Bridge, Bridge Street, Depot, Street area.
Well, what? If we take the bikes off of Main Street, or we take the idea of bikes safely off Main Street, then where do they go?
Well, that's the path idea, which I, I, we, um, I don't have that stuff in here yet, but.
But that's already sketched out.
We do have that stuff sketched out. And it's basically the series of improvements through the parking lots and then some roadway improvements and sidewalk improvements to connect them. So it's using your existing spaces, um, but making a designated pathway that goes through them.
And the big problem is getting from Flat to Elliot, right?
Yes, you, you end up at the transportation center and, and the stairs or the elevators if it works. And, you know, using, basically using the transportation center as what means.
Oh, I guess you could ride through the transportation center.
Probably not, we'll see.
Yeah, I'd love to try.
Could be, I guess, it's a long time to take. I don't know a lot of cars.
Well, I think there's still gonna be users of on-street bicycle lanes, it's just.
Yeah.
It's gonna be more of the share of the road, kind of, rather than a dedicated bike lane.
Yeah, I mean, I guess you'd, you'd have the, you know, choice to try to make the skip hill and go around too. But, you know, we're getting, I think there's ways to make using the stairs with your bicycle easier there if the stairs were changed on the transportation center, which is sort of one of the things we talked about at the Charette, was opportunities to make the stairway a bit more of a, um, a little less of a facility just for the users of the transportation center and a bit more of a.
Like a public passageway.
Oh, that's an interesting idea.
Yeah, there's like almost enough room where they would do like a big spiral going down for pedestrians.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Yeah, we, we looked at a lot of fun, fun, you know, options. And those, the really, I, I, did I show during the, the Charette, the really cool, like, I think they were, they were, they was Danish, I think. The street with the little track that you push, you got on with your bike and it pulled, it's like, it's like this little track in the road. And you get alongside it with your bike and you push on this little pedal on the track and it pops up. And then it pushes you up, you sit on your bike, you've got your foot down on this pedal that's on the track, and it pushes you and your bike up the hill.
Whoa, whoa.
Where is this?
I think it was, you have to YouTube this, I'll have to find this.
You did not show that.
I didn't show that.
It scares me of like being on a hoverboard and trying to get off.
I don't see it working in the snow.
A big festival.
Oh, it reminds me of like the, what is that called, like the magic carpet at the ski resort?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it, it, it was like, it was one of those things that looked like it was, you're gonna be spending forever trying to fix it. It looked like it had such maintenance issues, but they were very happy people going up and down. Going up this thing. It didn't go very fast, so, you know. Worst case scenario, you just put your feet down and you would be fine, you know, but, yeah, it was, it was interesting.
So have we given you what you want, what, 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 what work and we'll give you?
So, well, what I'm hearing is that the work we've got perhaps done on Harmony, stuff we've done on Preston will probably be fine. We're gonna throw more design time at the project. We should be looking down Bridge, Depot intersection area. Does that seem? What the consensus of the group?
Yeah, I, I, how, is there gonna be any effect on the BMAC project, on, on your design? Or is that all entirely not connected to that?
The BMAC project.
The museum.
The museum project. We have, we had a conversation with Danny during the Charette time period. We have an understanding of what it is that they are looking at, um.
They've gone public.
Yes, yeah. And, um, I think it lines up fine with what we were looking at on Bridge Street. Um, and, you know, so I don't see there being an issue. It would be nice if they moved the building back and give you ten more skidder sidewalk, but.
Yes.
You know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of the assets are due now.
It's still conceptual.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they, I think it's, the building is sitting sort of in a.
Why don't you put in your design that they do that?
Well, we can, we can suggest that.
I like, I like that idea, is, is that gonna help with a bike lane then?
Um, it wouldn't solve the problem.
Yeah, cause we stop the.
It wouldn't continue the problem, you know, as much, it would give you a little more sidewalk room there. It's actually really interesting because you're, you're, it's, it's so, it changes so much right there. You're like super tight right in front of the latches. And then that bridge is incredibly wide over the wetstone. And that crosswalk is ridiculous. It's like.
Yeah, it's a huge.
It's like eighty feet across that crosswalk.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's just, it's crazy wide, how wide it is. So there's a lot of opportunity to improve the pedestrian experience on the bridge or, and or bicyclist experience on the bridge. But it just crunches right in where the buildings come in. They're just, they're just, and obviously have for a very long time, been that close to each other. So, there you go. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, Freddie.
So I think you probably will plan to see me maybe again in February, just to keep the timeline.
So, um, it's eight twenty-six.
Holy crap.
Yeah, um. How do we feel about going on for another twenty minutes?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good too.
Very good? How about, how about another ten minutes?
I think we have Erin here, so we should at least hear from Erin.
Yeah, no, we definitely, we definitely wanna do the.
I think the rest, you know, we don't, we have a meeting in about two, two, three weeks.
Right.
So we can do some of that others.
Okay, okay.
I mean, so if we do Erin and.
So if we just do West, West Brattleboro? And then, and then H, which is not gonna take too long at all. Um, and then a drink, is that good for everybody? Okay. Um, so, uh, Erin, why don't you just explain?
Do you, you mean you wanna give a little context of what we're talking about first and then I?
Um, sure, so, so, um, this is the big picture planning efforts and just to, we, we just wanted to bring you guys all up to date with what we've been doing in West Brattleboro. Erin and I originally have been on the West Brattleboro Association for a long period of time. Um, and we have been talking for a while about trying to find, um, a third place or a community space for the Village of West Brattleboro. That's been going on for years and years and years. And then post-Irene, Melrose Terrace, we've talked about that before, that that, those buildings, a lot of those buildings are designated, eleven of them have been designated to come down. They're gonna redesign, um, that space, the bank space. And actually gonna dig out the brook from where it was filled in when the buildings were built. So it's gonna become less of a flood zone. It's not entirely free of flood zone, but it's some, there's some designation, it's gonna shift. And last year, two years ago, Chris Hart came to the WBA saying she had a plan for what to do with the remaining buildings in Melrose Terrace. So this past year, Erin started a project to focus community attention on that space with the idea of it potentially becoming, um, a third place for the Village of West Brattleboro. So that's what, that's what we'll meet.
Right, and we're looking at it also as, I mean, when we were looking at third places, which we were incredibly unsuccessful at finding over the course of about five years, what we've really been focusing on is economic development for West Brattleboro and like how to create a there there. We've watched business after business close, or business after business try to sell their property and been not successful in selling very large buildings. The Mattress Company, American Traders, now Chelsea. Chelsea Royal, I mean, there's a bunch, I mean, Dallin Chalet is arguably like, also in a place that needs to have a new, new vision. So this project, it's called Waterways, is like, as I said, a community engagement project around this particular plot of land at Melrose Terrace. So the grant that we got was through the Community Engagement Lab. And I'm a teaching artist and that was, they were really focusing on how teaching artists can gather the community and engage them in creative placemaking effectively. And, um, so that's, in June, we're gonna have a series of three events that, that, that does exactly that. The other focus they had in this grant, and certainly a focus for us as well, is that Melrose Terrace is a great example of how the climate is affecting people living along the waterway. And the wetstone is really arguably like the, the vital spine of West Brattleboro. But it is also quite dangerous. And so, um, part of what we're doing is bringing the community in relationship to the waterway and understanding better about how it's moving and how it will move and, and how we could be good stewards of that, um, waterway. We've been talking to other organizations, Connecticut River Conservancy, the Vermont River Conservancy, more recently, I'm gonna mess it up, the Watershed, um, Division of Maria.
Marie Cudito.
Yep.
Yes. Right, so I just went to that. And how, uh, the water quality, we're working with Bonneville Environmental Education Center. We're bringing in the Academy School and engaging all ages around like, how do we, how do we really shepherd this particular piece of land and this particular part of the wetstone? Bring it back to health and also because there's gonna be land there that won't be built on. And there'll be buildings that will rise up out of the floodway once all this work is done along that stretch. How do we use this space as public space going forward? So that's kind of the long vision.
And the building, the buildings that are gonna remain there potentially could be used for some kind of income generating. But it's not quite clear how. But the idea is ultimately to get this into an actual productive community space where it would be a location that would then attract people to revitalize the town, the village.
And its location, its location next to the Village Center is really key. And there's also other conversations about how to get kids from like Tri-Park on their bike to downtown. Like that's kind of a longer vision. And how is this a stopping point on that? And instead of having them on Route Nine, which is just crazy, to have them back there. So just starting to look at all the chunks, I walked the wetstone with Kathy Erfer. And it was really interesting to kind of see how people are using the wetstone in different areas, where you could see where there were swimming holes, where there are fishing holes and this thing. But also seeing how there are some really flat areas that could accommodate a lot of walking and biking. So, yeah, it's kind of a, a big thing that we're really kind of getting our, sinking our, our heels into in June.
Do you have any set dates yet or?
Right now, yeah, I mean, I, we have to check with a couple of our partners. Right now, yeah, I mean, I, we have to check with a couple of our partners to make sure. But right now we're looking at June seventh, fourteenth, and twenty-first. They're all Sundays.
Okay.
The first one will be around historical storytelling. And from the perspective Abenaki elders in the community, also some of the elders that lived right there in Melrose Terrace and loved it, so hearing stories and stories from people that grew up along the wetstone in West Brattleboro and their relationship to the waterway. And, and then we'll also draw out stories from the people that, other people that come and document those. The second event is more environmental. We'll have people from the Vermont River Conservancy and Connecticut River Conservancy as well as Bonneville Environmental Education Center. And the idea right now is that there'll be different kind of walking tours around there with educational components, they'll have a schedule. And then it's also then gonna result in working with two ceramic artists that are local. And that information that education people get will then be able to take a tile and be able to choose some aspect of the waterway there, that area, and draw how they envision the health coming back to that area. And then those tiles can be used in, at BEAC, maybe at Academy School. So there's a way of like visually connecting people to this site. Cause one of the ideas Chris Hart had, and something we left out, is that the idea right now is that, that might, that Brattleboro Housing Partnerships might create another organization, like a nonprofit, that would then hold this land once it's purchased back by a dollar, with a dollar back from FEMA. And so she's really looking at. Oh, it's HUD, sorry.
FEMA's paying for the regeneration. It owns the HUD's buildings, so.
Okay, right. So how those, those buildings, those, the remaining buildings can be used and maybe they can be used as classrooms as well. So that they have onsite education tying in other educational. And then the third, the third event is more movement-based and immediate experiencing. And then we'll also get the artwork that's taken from the first two events and we'll come to that event as well. And so it'll be our culminating event. And in that event is where we'll start to plant seeds of the community voicing what they'd love to see there. But after having lots of experience. That's where we are now.
Fantastic.
Making a little side.
Great.
Is there any? Oh no, I was gonna say, is there anything that we can do to help at this point or just kind of stay tuned and?
We're looking for really beautiful maps. And, and actually, we'd love to work with a map maker, but someone maybe that does hand-drawn maps. Not electronic. Cause we're, we're really thinking about this, the visual campaign of this. So that, you know, I always feel like we have to go back to the hand and that gets people to realize, oh, I, I'm, I'm included.
Yeah.
There's something that, if it's digital, too digital, there's a remoteness. So hand-drawn maps would be really beautiful.
Did you ever see the Wetstone Brook flyer? I'm not, I don't know that it's a hand-drawn map, but. Um, she tapes at BCTV, M. Richards did a lot of art on it. Let me get you one before you leave. I don't know if it's a hand-drawn map, but she did a lot of artwork around it.
Cool, I'd love to see that.
So I'll get you one, bye. I'll ask around to see if I can sign.
That'd be great.
We also want to get the word out so that people will come.
Absolutely, and we'll be doing, we'll also be doing a lot of outreach in the communities like Westgate and Tri-Park and some of the other communities in West Brattleboro. We're gonna be doing outreach. So it would be fantastic to have, and we're gonna set it up so there's sort of a list where you could sign up to be part of the outreach. And we'll do outreach events, cause it's the only way we're really gonna get everyone to feel like they're involved and invited. So, so that, that's where we're gonna love to have others come with us on those events. Yeah, make yourselves, that'd be great. Because people have questions, it'll be an experience, it won't be a meeting. But then we'll have time afterwards, like a Q and A. Any other questions?
It sounds like that village area needs some enthusiastic, enlightening creativity, so whatever we can help, let us know.
Yeah, I'm really excited about it. I feel like you folks have like really thought about everything. You know, I feel like you're like approaching it at all the different angles and like thinking about everybody. I really, I really think that I'm super excited to see, you know, it come to fruition.
Cool. And we'll have more to share with you as soon as we firm up those dates, we'll have. And we wanna work on a flyer right away and a beautiful poster. I mean, something like, someone would want that poster to frame that poster and they would keep it forever. That's the level of a poster.
Do you know Bryony Cribs? Bryony, she's from the Dummerston Putney area. You should check out her art. She's, she's not a map drawer, but she's good enough to be able to do something. I don't wanna take away from her.
No, no, no.
No, that's great.
She does like a lot of like botanicals and then like nature stuff.
Perfect.
She does like a lot of like, it's very similar to like Audubon Society art. She's like better than Audubon, like she's mind-blowing.
Okay.
So check her, Bryony, I don't know how you spell that.
And how do you spell her last name?
C R I B B S, Bryony.
Right.
Yeah, she's so good. Oh yeah, B R I O N Y.
B R I.
O N Y. Moro, N O R R O W dash crib, C R I B B S.
Okay, great.
Her, her art is mind-blowing and it's like, I think it's like what, what you guys are describing, I'm like.
Okay.
She's the one.
Cause I, and we're also envisioning like the layers, the overlays of, of the different outcomes there. Cause this is, it's about the environment, it's about, it's also about like the people that live along the wetstone or generally that's the cheapest land, so that when there are events, there's the people that actually need the most help. And so, you know, so there's a lot about social equity, there's about economic development, there's creating a there there. Anyway, so I wanna be able to have the map also show those things. And show the different populations and show the different kinds of engagement. Great, thanks for that. If any other ones, any other artists come to mind, it'd be great to work with them a local.
Alrighty, anything else?
Did you wanna talk about weather?
Oh yeah, so until such time as it does, it's not gonna snow anymore. I thought it would be a good idea for us to set aside the Wednesday following the first Monday of every week. So that we know if it's snowing on Monday, that we will just meet that Wednesday. Does everybody feel like they are willing and able to do that? So it's the, it, it won't always necessarily be the first Wednesday because it could be the.
Second, yeah.
It could be the second.
Just the Wednesday following that first.
So it's the Wednesday following the first Monday. So if you just clear your schedules until May.
So next meeting's the sixth.
Or take a look and make sure, yeah, like if you've got a conflict, just let us know.
Yeah, so that, so that this way we don't have to do what we did to do this time, which is run around and pull everybody and all that. We just know that if we, if we cancel the meeting for Monday, it will happen on that Wednesday.
So like the two days after, whatever, that was easy.
Right, right. Is that good? Yeah, I'm gonna miss a number of meetings in a row, the Monday meeting, so if it snows, I'll be here. And I don't know if there's any, you know, if you ever need a vote or something, if I can participate by phone.
You can, yeah, you can, yeah.
Okay.
We'll let you know if we need it for.
Great. All right, cool. So anything else?
No? Happy holidays, everyone.
Oh yes, happy holidays. And I need a motion to adjourn. So moved.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you. Interesting meeting.
I apologize for.